At this time, I'd like to call the work session to order for Tuesday, February the 28th. Like to welcome everybody to be here. I do under, I've been told that Mr. Scotty Smith will not be here. He had prior engagement and Mr. Chuck Francis will also be absent as well. If everybody will look at their packet, we have a letter here to the county commissioners. Dr. Garrett, you want to tell us a little bit more about this?
When we purchase the letter, you should have a standard letter in there. You should have the letter that we've wrapped. What we have been asked to do tonight is, is that how you want it in its entirety or do you want it changed?
Right now, this is a letter to the commissioners.
Thank you. Yes, that is correct. Why don't I do this, Mr. Kirkpatrick and Mr. Chairman, send you that because that was supposed to have been in your packages. Why don't I send that to you tomorrow and you can look at it and then see and maybe next Thursday we'll make that decision. Okay? Is that okay?
That sounds great. Thank you, Dr. Garrett. The next item on the agenda is going to be Ms. Gardner going over the local budget. So I'm going to turn it over.
Before we get started, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, two local budgets have been prepared this year, which is kind of unusual for us. Budget number one is being shared with you tonight. This budget includes House Bill 13, which reduces classroom size in grades K through three, and we had spoken about this before. If that passes, then that will mean that Haywood County schools will have to hire between nine and 10 additional K through three teachers. The cost of that will be anywhere between $450,000 and $500,000. So we had to place that in a budget. Okay, budget number two, if we have to do House Bill 13, we could not afford to do the supplement, or those nine to 10 teaching positions. We would ask if we were to be able to do budget number two, that zero to four years of experience would be increased to four and a half percent, five to nine years of experience, five percent, 10 to 14 years of experience, five and a half, 15 to 19, 16 percent, 20 to 24, six and a half percent, and then 25 plus would max out at seven percent. Now, the cost for this, which is very ironic, is $423,000. So that's a goal that we would really hope that we would be able to do, but again, with House Bill 13, there was no way we could put both items into the budget. So tonight, we're going to show you the one with the nine to 10 additional teachers in it.
Okay.
Right now, House Bill 13 is still unfunded.
It is. I spoke to Representative Clampett today and he assured me that it was still intact with the original writing in it.
And so there's no talk of any kind of funding?
No. And I'll tell you things that they have not considered, and Joe's going to share with you his budget tonight for capital outlay. If you actually create that many classrooms, one, you've got to have space, which I think right now we do have the space. But you know, that takes furniture and materials and supplies to set up those rooms. And then each kindergarten teacher has to have a TA, so that would mean that we would have to pull first grade teacher assistants and place them into kindergarten. That's never even been mentioned.
We're going to leave our TA in first grade?
We very well could.
Either way, we're looking at having to find $450,000.
It's correct. Now, if the state were to do that, then we could go ahead and do budget number two, which includes the supplement for $423,000.
Now, the $450,000 is five hundred for the nine?
Teaching positions.
Yeah, for the non-funded House 13 deal. Now, is that taking in the TAs or you just?
It's just, no, it's just.
And I'll move it in from first.
We will, we will have to, because like I know last year, we did K one plus one is what we ended up doing. Years ago, we were able to do K through three, but you know, the money keeps drilling down to where we can't afford it anymore. I mean, unless you were to place in your budget, you know, 10 teacher assistants.
So if you kept that, if you kept the TAs of first grade and more, then that budget would do more than $500,000.
Yes, it would be. If, in other words, if you hire out of those 10 positions, if you hire three kindergarten teachers, you've got to have three assistants from someplace.
Right.
Yeah. And again, Mr. Kirkpatrick, that doesn't include materials and supplies, and you know, those kindergarten classrooms have a lot of materials and centers and things like that in them that are rather expensive.
Let me ask you a question, maybe off the wall, but why wouldn't we, see if we could set up some kind of joint meeting with the commissioners and explain to them what we're facing and see if we can, you know, we want to do a supplement, House Bill 13 may be on that as well. Maybe they'll understand that in order to do both, they're going to have to let us decide.
And Dr. Rogers, I've kept Ira Dove informed of every single thing. I'm like, every time I get a legislative update, I always send it to him. We've talked about it several times, even when Joe and I went to the county commissioners to, for a meeting, it was discussed at that meeting also. So I think they're very much aware of it, but would you like for me to arrange a meeting?
Well, I think you could do good to let us send you away from them. If they've got questions. You know, sometimes you can, when you send letters back and forth, there's, you can't read people's tone. And you know, you, if you're not careful, we'll end up in a head misarial relationship with them rather than. Let's see if we can do this thing.
That's correct. I'll go ahead and set up a meeting. We can tell them about the three possibilities.
We're 500 people to say, look, this is the most important, our children are the most important asset we have. We're 500 people to say, look, this is the most important, our children are the most important asset we have. And nobody put it clearer than Dr. McNamara. I wish we'd have had that on video. I'd like to see it every day, just to, just to remind us. Whatever you guys think, I'm for.
I think it'd be really good, like Larry said, or Jim, I can't remember now, but if we could have, if we could meet with them and talk about House Bill 13, local supplement, and then let the community college follow us up with a joint meeting with the three of us, yeah.
Well, the input would be, I would be prepared to prioritize the request, because if I'm a county commissioner, they're going to be saying, okay, that's a lot of money. If we can't do it all, in what order do you want to do it? Just some proof. You don't have to give that answer, Mrs. Asks, but I think I can have that answered.
Either way, I mean. Yeah, the House Bill 13, we're going to have that, we're going to have to pay for regardless. I mean, yeah, that's something that we will have to pay for. The other two issues or items, you know, we'd like to be able to, to address if we can possibly find that funding. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Garrett.
And you can see, like I said, the cost for the increase in the supplement would be about $423,000. Mrs. Gardner has worked diligently on these two budgets and she's going to view the line items for you in budget number one, which contains the teachers that we need in House Bill 13. Thank you.
So the board, let me get my mic on. Just a little housekeeping before I start through the line items of this budget. The budget assumptions that we are working with this budget year is a projected 2% salary increase for every employee based on their current base salary. FICA will stay the same. I'm using a projected retirement rate of 16.75% and a matching, employer matching hospitalization annual rate of 5,849. Currently, our retirement rate is 16.54% and the current hospitalization annual cost is 5,754. And for our new board members, just to kind of give you a history, in less than 10 years ago, in 08, 09, the matching retirement rate was 8.75% and hospitalization was 4156. So you'll see that our benefit cost is really gaining a lot of ground, a lot in a very quick pace. If an employee works more than six hours a day, they are eligible for retirement and matching healthcare costs. They, the employee pays 6% of their base salary and we, the employer, pay 16 point, currently 54, and we're projecting 16.75%. Part of the reason this is pushed so high is in that 16.54%, a little over 6% of that, not 6% of 16.75, but 6% is to go to pay for retiree healthcare benefits, which is an unfunded mandate. So anyway, just a little housekeeping there to get started. Like Dr. Garrett said, line one, we are projecting to pay for 26.5 teachers. Our original budget this year was for 21 and a half positions. We're increasing that by five positions. The other four positions we will pay using some state ABC transfers. We'll use 50,000 of PRC 24 on the state side before allocating to the schools. We'll use 50,000 of State 61 before allocating to the schools. And then we will, we will take the equivalent of two classroom teachers from textbook money before allocating to the schools. Again, all that's on the state side, but that's four posi, that's the other four positions of the nine. Following the classroom teacher projected cost, the next line is the Pisgah High School football head coach summer employment month cost. Line three are the high school band directors, two summer months employment cost. Line four, we pay for lead teachers, and again, whether it's lead teachers, classroom teachers, we choose the cheapest and put them in local. Line five is the additional responsibility stop and pay to lead teachers. That's at $1,500 per teacher. The following three lines, six, seven, and eight, are the employer matching contributions required on the above items. Line nine is the summer employment months for the Tuscola football head coach for summer. He is a non-employee and we pay him through contracted services and do not pay any matching benefits on him.
Ms. Gardner, back on the, the summer employment months, let's see, two and three?
Yes, sir.
Now, what was the, I know it's a small amount, but.
They're your band directors.
Oh, they're, it's going up in $90.50? I mean, like numbers.
Yes, that is our, the football coach, if he gets a 2% raise for two months, it'll be about $90 more for those two months. If you'll recall, our high school football coach and our two band directors, they're 12-month employees. And because there's not students in session, we can't pay them out of the state classroom teacher allotment, which is where we normally pay them. Okay, all right. Moving down into program 002, line 10, that pays for two administrative positions. One is point nine, that is our director of policy, driver's ed, well, policy, athletic director, and then the foundation, cultural, can I just say their names? Are y'all okay with that? As I'm trying to remember what and all they do. Point nine is Mark Shepherd and one position is Jenny Wood. And Mark's other 10% is over in fund eight. He does driver's ed and we pay 10% of his salary from part of the, we use part of the fees we collect from students to pay his salary. You can. I mean, I can, I can.
No, you're okay.
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
Because I mean, it's public domain.
I speak safely. I've heard about it. It's public information. Someone could request what it costs to pay Bill Nolte or.
I mean, salaries are publicized.
Any person, so I think it'd be legal.
Okay.
And that 2.3 is the 2% raise.
Yes, sir. And the follow, lines 11 through 13 are the employer matching contributions. Line 14 is half of the EC director position. The following three lines following that line is matching employer contributions. Line 18 is the assistant finance officer. Lines nine, the following three are the benefits. Line 22 is point three of an administrator, that is Ms. Kim Jackson. Benefits follow. Line 26, employee reimbursement taxable, that's actually what we pay to the board, 1,800 for the chairman, 1,500 per year for board members. The matching social security cost follows that. Line 28 is the travel line for board and board attorney. Line 29 is membership dues and fees. That is North Carolina School Board Association, 15,620. North Carolina School Board Association PAC, 3,000, and NCASA, 6,700. I'm sorry. Yes, sir. 15,620 goes to North Carolina School Board Association membership. The PAC is 3,000. And then 6,700 is NCASA, North Carolina Association of Super, School Administrators.
Okay, I'm sorry, 28 was board attorney and board.
And board travel, board member and, board member and board attorney travel. That's okay. That is the line where we pay board members their buy, yeah. Yes, sir.
1,500 per.
Yes, it's 1,500 per member, 1,800 for the chairman.
Well, on 29, the membership dues and fees.
Yeah, all that's wrong.
I know we talked about it. I personally met with you and talked to you about the $3,000. I would see the $3,000 there go away to, that we pay to PAC. I don't know how that's, I mean, it's in the budget. I'm requesting for that. There'd be a deduction in the $3,000 that we're paying for the PAC.
Okay, what you'll have to do, what you'll have to do is. Because we can't vote in here.
I know. That's why I say you can't, you can't vote.
That's, that's a request, yeah.
That's a request.
To look into.
Shall I break that out as, and put the 3,000 in the increase line?
That would be good.
Can you put the 3,000 in a separate line to be voted on separately?
I can. I will, I can add a user code. Yes, sir, I can.
29, 8.
29, 8, yes, sir.
And if you, if that $3,000 wasn't paid to the PAC, where would the, can the money be used elsewhere?
Yes, sir.
Yes. What local fund? Yeah, if it's local, we can use it anywhere.
Use it wherever you need to use it, yes. Slap you, man.
Okay.
All right. I think we're on line item 30 now, general ability.
Yes, sir, line 30. $50,000 we pay to Utica. Line 31, that is board supplies. Line 32 is legal services and that includes the PLS Board Policy Update Service Fee at $5,600. Line 33 is the annual audit. Line 34 is the associate superintendent supplement. Line 35 is the superintendent supplement. Their matching social security and retirements follow through line 39. Line 40 is our document scanning services. That is for graduate records for transcripts. Line 41 is pre-employment criminal records check.
Can I back up just for a second on, I know line 40 there, we just talked, actually just a little while ago about that scanning. You said, Dr. Nolte said, probably three more years and we'll have all that done. Or is this an ongoing service that we're going to have to do every year?
Boy, because each year we'll have those records to scan. Every time we have a graduating class, in other words.
Yeah, what we.
But that would, but that would certainly get us called up.
Would that price go down once we get those back records caught up? Or is this, is this a sort of a set price on the current?
There's not been a price increase since we started doing services with him. I can't, he couldn't project if there would be an increase in future years or not.
So this is, so what I'm.
Won't go away, though.
Yeah, I know it's not going to go away, but you know, if we're not scanning old records, we're just scanning the, the graduating class, basically.
Well, I think the cost is a subject because it's done by box, in other words. And when he goes down and gets 16 boxes, it's X amount for him to actually transport them and then do the process itself.
Okay.
It depends on, like, you know, when we graduate, we'll have, oh, let's see, we'll have four, 450, 500 graduates this year.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
There may be some additional costs in that besides scanning as far as housing that data. Am I right or wrong?
Yeah, there's, there's a little bit of housing cost in that, and right now, I think that the last, the last time we met, we've got about 100 boxes, plus whatever we accumulate each graduation year, that we're, we're behind being caught up at zero. And like, I think what you were leading to, once we get caught up, we're only going to be scanning that year. We're looking at about 18 to 20 boxes.
Right.
But we've got to get to that point. So we are scanning more each year than what we actually are graduating. So that, that cost is a little bit higher, but it's not just the scanned cost. It's also the housing of records and some of those other costs that happen offsite that go along with that, that's included in that, that cost.
Hopeful that in a couple of years.
I think it is possible, but I think in, in reality, we're probably more than three years away from having that conversation about that, that number going down any.
But eventually, when that happens, there will be a significant decrease.
Okay.
Line 41, pre-employment criminal records check. Line 42, that is the cost that we pay to the county for the central office building. Line 43, central office copier cost.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
We pay the county that.
That is for.
Rent?
It's for, they charge us what they pay for their electrical bill if they, and for like elevator servicing and.
Okay, so it's not, it's not rent or lease, it's.
No, it's our utility. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
Okay, let's see. Copier. Line 44, travel reimbursement. The keepers, this is for our school bookkeepers that bring deposits to the bank. They bring payroll to central office. Line 45 is superintendent travel line. Line 46 is central office postage. Line 47, membership dues and fees for the superintendent. Line 48, vehicle liability insurance. Line 49 is our property insurance that we have through the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. They have a self-insured program that we've paid into for years. Line 50, superintendent supplies and materials line. Line 51, central office supplies and materials line. Line 52 is Cook Consulting and it's our base support I series AS400. And you'll hear me later, when I get down into the finance department's budget, hear me say Cook Consulting again. But what this is, this is our AS400 system and we have to have that in order to communicate with DPI. That's how they pick up our financial records. That's how we receive reports from them. If you start hearing folks talk about the ERP, which was passed by the General Assembly last year, it's going to be about a 70 to 80 million dollar plan. And the ERP is for this AS400 communication to go away from the school. So that, we may lose this in the next year or two, have to pay, having to pay that cost.
Ms. Gardner, going back to the reimbursement for the travel for 44 and 45, well, personally, now, is that something that they get their mileage and they turn it in?
They do. No, they turn in their mileage. It's, it's actual mileage.
It's whatever the statute.
They turn it in once a month, is that?
They do. They do, yes, sir. I think the current rate is 53 and a half cents per month.
I do have a question. 49, the property insurance, does that cover the main office building?
Doesn't cover our building. We're covered under the county, I would imagine. These are our schools.
Oh, it covers the school?
Yes, sir.
That like fire insurance?
It's, it's all of our property.
That's through department insurance. They cover all state buildings.
1.4 million square feet, that's about.
I'll say that seems pretty reasonable for.
It is, and I, and I think, Mr. Clark, because we've paid into that self-insured, I think it would cost us more at this point because it's almost like we've made an investment. Does that make sense? Hopefully, we'll never have to use it.
Yes.
Okay, are we ready for line 53? That is our substitute teacher cost for regular teacher absences. If you'll recall, we receive state 003 money in the state, but we try to pay our custodians in state 003 and pick up substitute teacher cost in local because the work comp rate on our custodians is higher. And by paying them, those folks out of state 003, then it forces the state to pay that. It's a guaranteed benefit that we don't have to. And matching social security follows, school-based clerical, 30 and a half school clerical positions. And I've highlighted that just as a reminder, and what the 10,632 is the social security cost, that is for a 2% raise on the 30 and a half plus the social security. But I highlighted it to remind myself that the finance committee approved a halftime position for Wendy Rogers at Hazelwood earlier in the fiscal year and through the end of the year. And you said that you would look at that again as far as next year when it came budget time. So that's not that person's cost. It's just to remind me. Because it's, her cost would be around 10,000 and we would only pay, so just matching social security because she's only four hours per day. That's just kind of a reminder that that needs to be discussed or.
So that, but that $10,000 will be.
That's for the full year, next year, correct?
For the full year next year, four hours.
Yeah, it's, it would be. Yeah, it's, it would be around that, yeah. Uh, the full seven seventy-two, one seventeen, um, is the total amount needed to pay the thirty and a half and the half be in the Hazelwood position.
So if we did not approve that, we could deduct?
Yeah, you could, we could take it.
Seven, so it would be seven sixty-two, basically, somewhere.
Yes.
That's right. And again, this is for, I'll, I'll, just to remind everybody, this is Hazelwood, because of the consolidation, and I think Wendy was going through some. Had a couple of her staff that had some, was out for a little while and needed some extra help and.
But she hadn't asked for it yet.
She has.
Yeah.
She asked that it be continued.
Would that need to go back through the Finance Committee to bring back to the board, or?
Uh, you're putting it on the board.
You could put it just in this budget and you could either ask that it be taken out or, or, or ask that it be remain in.
Yeah, I think, yeah, well, myself, I mean, I think that's one of the things that needs to be like a, hey, year to year, because once you put in this budget.
Yeah.
It's gonna be in the budget from now on, that's how they'll budget it, so.
Do you wanna bring that one out as well, make a separate line item?
I mean, it's, I mean, it's separate right now, I mean, it's a plus ten thousand, so.
Uh, you just look at it, sort of like the three thousand dollars for the PAC, where we vote on it and separately.
Put it in, I'll put it separate as, and I can put the school code, so we know it's, it's three forty-eight.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's ten, it's actually eleven thousand.
Yep.
Well, a position like that, shouldn't it come out, period, and just, and come back through Finance?
Not necessarily, because we said that we would look, I mean, it could, uh, Dr. Rogers, but what we said was we would look at it and see if we had funds to put it back into the budget yearly, or at least for this upcoming year. I mean, but you can take it out, put it in, I mean, however you want to do it.
Push it back through Finance.
I think we need to bring it back this year and look at it.
Okay, so take it out of this budget and then let it go through Finance again, okay?
Bring it back to Finance.
And the difference being it's personnel versus an association.
Okay, okay.
And y'all want that brought back to Finance before the end of this fiscal year, before this budget is approved, March nine, or March?
I would think so.
I would think so.
Tenth.
Yes.
Okay, alright. We'll do it. Line fifty-eight, there's a slight reduction there, that accounts for the p- um, projected increase in hospitalization. But also, we had, um, budgeted an extra person for insurance this year, and that person was rifled. And we pay their insurance for twelve months, so they should be coming off, so the difference is a savings of about twenty-nine hundred. This was a non-certified.
Okay.
Uh, line fifty-nine is the guidance, uh, clerical position at Piska High School, her matching benefits follow. Line sixty-three is, uh, two, one and a half clerical positions, um, one clerical position at Central Office, which is the elementary, middle, and high school secretary, and a half position at Central Office, that's the clerical position for the CTE Director. And the, um, driver's ed policy and athletic directors.
Mark.
Yes, thank you, and the, uh, matching follows. Um, line sixty-seven is a half administrative position, that's Mr. Todd Trantham, right down here on my left. His additional responsibility stock and follow, matching benefits, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, follow that. Line seventy-two is our, uh, telephone line for the system is, uh, ITS. We are currently paying around just over four thousand dollars a month, you'll see, that's a little bit more than forty-eight thousand. Our E-rate reimbursement is gonna continue to go down on our phone service, and so that's why you see a little bit of an increase there. Line seventy-three, reduction of fifty thousand dollars, that's one of the ways that we're paying for, um, one of the positions up in the oh-oh-one, the, the five teaching positions that we added there. We went from, if you'll recall, we, um, changed internet providers from Charter to AT&T, so we feel like two hundred and ten thousand will be sufficient for next year. Line seventy-four is cellphone, uh, reimbursements, that is the line for Central Office Administration, SROs, social workers. Line seventy-five.
And I go back now, seventy-four is?
Cellphone reimbursements.
For who now?
It's central, Central Office Administration, uh, SROs.
Social workers.
Social workers. They receive three, about three sixty, well, the social workers receive less, but the full reimbursement amount is three sixty per year.
Three sixty per year, per person? Three hundred and sixty dollars have equaled out to be?
Thirty a, thirty a month.
Thirty a month.
See, that was cut twenty-five percent last year.
Social workers receive, uh, seven dollars and fifty cents a month for ten months, for a total of seventy-five. And, um, SROs receive thirty dollars a month for ten months, for three hundred dollars.
Click it out.
And the central, central office, that's everybody? I mean, that's secretaries?
No, no, it's just administrators.
Just administrators.
And finance, yeah.
The only clerical position, I think, is the Board Assistant.
Is Brooke.
Yeah.
That receives it.
Right across the line, thirty dollars a month?
We pay it in one lump sum, it's three sixty.
I mean, but that's what it breaks down to, thirty dollars a month for everybody.
Yes, sir.
Administration, SROs, and.
Social workers get less.
How much does social workers get again?
Seven dollars and fifty cents per month.
Social workers get seven dollars.
They used to get ten dollars a month, we cut it by twenty-five percent.
Well, I think we need to look into, and I've talked to Dr. Ann about this, and the building and ground needing, uh. I mean, I think we need to look into who is getting paid and who's not, who needs it and who don't need it.
Okay, I've got a list, uh, if you want to go through that.
I mean, yeah, I'd like to go through it, but I don't know whether you wanna go through it now, wait until we get done with all of them.
Okay.
Cause are there any other cellphones?
Well, that's just, that's just one of the line items, yes, there's several.
Only one line.
Yes, there's several line items.
Bus drivers and all of those stuff in there, right?
Let's go ahead and go through it with them at the end.
Okay, I'll make that available to you.
We'll hop that.
Line seventy-five, uh, Electrical Service, one point four million, uh, just as a note. Last year, we spent one million, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one, so we cut that really close. And turn the power off on June thirteenth. Um, natural gas, line seventy-six, um, we u- we're reducing that budget by twenty-five thousand dollars. And that's helping to offset that increase in the twenty-six and a half teachers that we talked about earlier.
And that twenty-five thousand, is that what?
Came from Joe.
That was the contract.
Propane.
That savings that we're getting.
Yes, sir. I grabbed that money that night.
Thank you, Joe.
Well, thanks, Joe.
Don't let Andy know you had to.
That's right.
That happens when you speak up.
So that will take care of a half teacher position, twenty-five thousand.
And that's good for four years, isn't it, Joe?
Three.
Three years.
Alright, um, line seventy-seven, Water and Sewer. Line seventy-eight, Waste Management, that's, uh, what we pay to the town of Waynesville. Line seventy-nine is Fuel for Facilities, and that is supposed to?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Eighty-eight, Waste Management, Town of Waynesville?
Yeah, that's, um, schools that are in the city limits of Waynesville and they pick up our trash.
So we have all the other trash facilities, I mean, what's the cost is for other schools outside the city limits?
Um, that's gonna be on line eighty-five.
Okay, you're down there, alright, I'm sorry.
That's up.
Eighty thousand for that, and that's all the rest of the schools.
Okay, so inside, yeah, rest of the schools, so you're saying thirty-five thousand, how many schools is that taking inside Waynesville?
Hazelwood and.
Let me see if I can.
Waynesville Middle, you've got Tuscola.
Tuscola and city limits?
Um.
I think they were. I thought they were out of the city limits.
They might be.
Yeah, Waynesville Middle and Hazelwood.
It used to be central.
June, yeah, it was, it used to be central, but that's.
And they probably pick up at ALC too.
ALC, yeah, they're probably ALC. Maybe Junaleska, that's what I'm thinking, I don't believe.
Junaleska is in city limits.
It's right at that verge, yeah, cause that line, I think they extended it to see if it's out.
You're absolutely correct, Mr. Rogers.
You'd have Hazelwood, Central, I mean, Hazelwood, Waynesville Middle, like you say, probably alternative learning center.
ALC and Junaleska.
And Junaleska.
So four, four schools for thirty-five thousand, we got.
Four schools.
We.
More for eighty, yeah, that's.
We could probably reduce that, we've so, well, we're halfway through the year, we spent about eleven thousand, so I might could knock five to eight thousand off.
I would say without Central, now, they.
Yeah.
They might help somewhere, I mean, we're going through that full cycle of it.
Reduce it by ten, maybe.
I would reduce it by all.
Eleven thousand, two sixty-seven is what we've paid for the first six months.
It is a finance, so. Whatever you think that you can reduce it, but I would suggest that that might be something you can look into. How do we get our trash picked up from other areas, just contractors?
Yeah, I think what he's saying is, could the, could, are we like, in a contract with Waynesville? Do we have to allow them to pick it up, or could we allow this?
So I was saying, if we could, could we maybe look at subcontracting on all of her?
If you, when we get down to, well, let's go ahead and talk about line eighty-five, since it's two separate things, I mean, it's two, same thing, two separate lines. Line eighty-five, we pay, uh, Sandtech and Hinson Waste, uh, for the remainder of the school. Sandtech, I think, is the, um, when you take it to the landfill.
Mm-hmm.
Call, the cost that we pay. To date, we've paid, uh, Hinson Waste about forty-one thousand, just over forty-one thousand, that's running about fifty-five hundred to six thousand per month for Hinson Waste.
I'm sorry, how much?
Uh, fifty-five hundred to six thousand per month for Hinson Waste. To date, we've paid Sandtech, uh, just over seven thousand.
There's gonna be more, there's gonna be more.
Like Hinson's got majority of the rest of the schools, or is it something?
Yeah, but.
Sandtech, isn't that a certain item that you have, is it like bulk items, or certain things you have to take to White Oak?
White Oak, yeah.
And the rest of the trash doesn't have?
No, you get a tipping fee.
I think, I think that even, when Mr.
We, we have to pay a dump fee, don't we, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Field fee?
Yes, we have to pay disposal on all of our trash, whether.
Is that seven thousand dollars covers all our dump fee, or is it somewhere else in here?
That's what we've paid to date to Sandtech, is seven thousand dollars. Uh, and that is, that does include, if you look at our budgets, it includes, uh, the fee for Hinson Waste. It also includes if our, uh, department takes stuff down, like big loads or something, it's, it includes all of that.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yeah.
Do we, to get back to the Town of Waynesville, are we paying landfill fee on what they dump for us to?
I d- I don't know that answer, I'm sorry, um, it may be built into, you know, what we pay, we pay directly to the Town of Waynesville. It may be built in as part of there, but I don't, I don't know.
I don't believe we do, I believe the fee that we pay for them to pick up our trash cans and that service includes the disposal of the trash. So that's why you're seeing that number possibly a little higher than what it is the rest of the county, um, with.
That's what I was getting at.
With Hinson, we pay the fee, but then we also pay a set price for him just to come pick it up. Or we're not having to pay them the extra to cover the cost of disposal. Um, it's almost, well, we lease the can and pay for his truck to come and he charges for even numbers, twenty dollars to come pick up a truck. I'm not saying that's the exact number, but to describe it, so, does that kinda help clarify?
And that's what I was, I was getting at, is we're having to pay the dump fee when he dumps it, or we're having to pay it for Town of Waynesville, and that might clarify why it's there's a difference there, but it still seems a lot higher at thirty-five thousand versus.
Now, Hinson's not, if we have Bo to go out, Hinson's not picking that, they're just picking up dumpsters. And Town of Waynesville's just picking up dumpsters.
Correct.
So.
Now.
Sandtech thing has to be stuff we're taking down there.
Or Hinson does, because we have roll-off containers too at the schools. That we have Hinson pick up and haul and dispose of.
Time to time, or all the time?
Regularly, not weekly, but every two months or something, there are trash from the high schools especially.
Is that where we do the cardboard too, Joe?
Cardboard is through the county recycling, so we don't pay to dispose of recycling.
What are we throwing in roll-offs that often?
It would amaze you.
It probably would. I just can't imagine.
Just think of the shops.
Uh, the Town of Waynesville dumpster fees are for three schools, uh, Central Elementarys, uh, Hazelwood and Waynesville Middle is what we've paid this year.
So, yeah, I'm sorry.
ALC.
So are they still charging us for Central?
They have not picked those dumpsters up yet, um, Christie has emailed them multiple times to pick that up.
Oh, we're being, still being charged for that?
I'm sure the, the neighborhoods probably.
Same, Hazelwood, Waynesville Middle.
That is possible.
They're still charging us for Central, these dumpsters.
And Waynesville Middle?
Three, three.
Yeah, and I think the ALC is probably, we code it to, to Hazelwood, because it's the old Hazelwood side.
We're cutting that budget by ten, you already said that.
That's right.
And then I think we need to start looking outside and seeing about contracting with Hinson or whoever else about picking up Waynesville Middle and the rest of them.
Yeah.
Why don't we ask Joe to investigate and see if he can come up with anything cheaper?
Give us a cost comparison.
Cost analysis.
They picked up the system.
That's a little better worded instead of.
It's Bill Jones, too, I'm sure.
And I will.
Just do your job.
Well, and, and you said we've already paid Hinson forty-one thousand, so that eighty thousand may be a little short then. Cause if it's seven. If it's seven thousand dollars, then forty-one thousand.
I think I looked at that this week, and I think that we've paid them maybe through mid-February, we're kind of.
Okay, alright, cause I was trying to say, we're gonna be short about fourteen thousand, so the ten we're saving over there, we're gonna have to put on this line item.
That's right, well, again, you know, you have to, we, we look at line seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine and eighty-five, all of those, we kind of look at all those together, it, if you're not seeing them together. But as long as we've kind of fall within budget each year, does that make sense? We can have some overflow on one and underflow.
Okay.
I don't start getting real stressed unless we're gonna go over on all of those.
Okay.
That's why we wanna be very careful about not reducing those lines too awfully much, it, it costs a lot of money to run a, a school system, so, anyway. We, we're good?
Yeah, and then you were gonna point out on the, the seventy-nine, that that is a deduction.
Yes, and this is just something, um, you know, during the budgeting process, that we wanted to talk about. And, uh, we've talked, spoken to Dr. Garrett, spoken to Joe, each year, we, um, he gets summer months of employment. And we shake the trees and, um, try to see, he, I hold him up, because I'm waiting to see, well, how much money am I gonna have in oh-oh-three? And of course, where that comes from is where we have gaps in employment, we have, we have a custodian that leaves, we don't get a replacement for three to four weeks. So our budgets are, you know, we've, we've got those gaps, but that state oh-oh-three has decreased in the last four years by about forty thousand dollars. And that continues to drop, it's he- heavily driven by our ADM, and that's, of course, why. And so, we're down to kind of shaking the trees and how's this gonna shake out? So, um, if we reduce fuel, fuel for facilities by thirty thousand and could have, just take that money and have a, a couple of budget lines for summer employments, it would be helpful, it'd be helpful to him. He would, July first, we would start paying po- folks from those lines if approved by the board, and then next spring, he could look and say, well, I had twenty-seven thousand. I've spent nineteen thousand, I've got this much to hire until July, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, cause we've never had it separate before.
We've never had it separate before, and honestly, he just, he waits on me to say, oh, I don't know.
But now we've got a set.
We can, um, uh, we both looked at that, we could probably pull a little bit more, but again, Mr. Rogers, I hate pulling those types of things down real tight.
Cause next year it might not be so.
You're, you're in agreement with that?
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Okay. I didn't hear your second over there, Joe. Okay, but anyway, that's just for y'all to consider, I really feel like it, it's a better. Better.
I like that.
And the numbers came from Joe, Joe thought that, that would be good numbers for him, for, and again, that's two, it's two summers. It's July first through August, and then it's at the, it's the beginning. It's July first through August, and then it's at the, it's the beginning of fiscal year and the end of the fiscal year, so it's.
Would that crux for you?
I find it somewhere else.
See, them other trucks gonna get better fuel mileage, that's where, that's where we're saving.
Are there any questions about that? Does everyone feel comfortable with that? Okay, alright, see, I gave him his money back, see, I'm not too bad. Custodian, line eighty, seventeen custodians, we currently have about uh fourteen that get benefits and about three that. Are not on benefits, and again, we um sh- shape my staff that does a great job. If somebody leaves us, we try to push folks over into the state O-O three as much as we can. But from a budgeting standpoint, we're gonna budget for fourteen with benefits and about three hourly.
Can I ask you a question, well, that may be something later, but out of these, out of these custodians here. With the ones who have benefits, are some of those dual employees, like maybe child nutrition and custodians or?
Some of them are dual employees in that they may drop.
There may be something.
They may drop a bus, that's why you'll see that overtime.
Okay.
Right, we don't, we, sometimes our custodians have to work over, or if we're short of a, we're short a custodian. Joe call and say, can you take this person off as a comp time person and make them an overtime, just until we can get that filled, and that's where you'll see that over.
That's why the next line, okay, that's kinda where I was thought.
A lot of that is when um they lose a custodian and they're down to, you know, a partial staff.
Thank you.
Alright, and I think we've covered line eighty-five. Line eighty-six. Line eighty-six through ninety-two, the uh code sixty-five forty, those are all co- custodial maintenance type lines. Uh the first one is custodial equipment repairs, twenty-five thousand. Uh sixty-five forty, uh we took that out, uh we've not used that in a couple of years, and that's when we had some custodians that were itinerant. They drove back and forth between schools, but we don't have folks that do that anymore. Um line eighty-eight, um Joe's requesting, I believe he brought this last month uh to. We increase his maintenance department personnel from ninety dollars per year to three sixty per year. And he is uh proposing to pay for that sixty-three hundred dollar increase by reducing the travel that we no longer use. And reducing custodial supplies by sixty-one fifty.
And that's a cellphone use going from seven fifty to thirty, correct?
Ninety, uh, they get ninety dollars a month, so yeah, I guess.
I think it's seven dollars and fifty cents, wasn't that what you brought?
Ninety a year.
Ninety a year, did I say a month?
Yeah, I started saying ninety a month, I have that.
Wrong, sorry, that's right, yes.
Fifty per month.
Yeah, it's seven fifty a month, and so, won't go to, like everybody else, thirty a month. You're wanting to move it to thirty a month?
I've already said my piece about that, we'll talk about that.
Here's a three sixty a year.
Sorry, I better have on my mic. That line is the cell phones also.
Yes.
We'll talk about.
Pull that out too.
I, I will ask more questions at the end of the presentation.
Okay. Line ninety, uh custodial utility supplies, line ninety-one, custodial repair parts and materials. Line ninety-two, custodial equipment. Line ninety-three is Mister Todd Trantham, that's his half transportation director part. Uh half additional responsibility stopping, matching benefits follow. Line ninety-eight, that is Mister Buchanan, line ninety-nine is the maintenance clerical. Line one hundred is the twenty-two skilled trades positions in his department. Line one oh one is um Mister Buchanan's extra responsibility stopping, matching follows. Line one oh five is maintenance uh workshop allowable travel. On one oh six, elevator repair and permits.
Wait a minute.
Get back up to like, wha- what was one oh two?
One oh two.
That's about, one oh one.
One oh one.
One oh one.
Um that's the additional responsibility stopping for uh the maintenance director.
What does that consist of usually, Joe, I mean, what's it?
That includes, like if he has a water line break on Saturday, he comes in, or if he works like tonight until. Whenever we get finished here, it's just a compensation, your supervisors get that, and then also your administrators get it too.
Okay.
And we'll, when we find the other line items, we'll explain those to you for the admin, for the site administrators.
Okay, so what was one oh two?
Social security, social security, matching FICA.
Okay, uh, but that's for the entire.
Department.
Okay, that's, when I saw that, fifty-nine thousand, I was like. Okay, that's the entire department, I'm sorry.
Sir.
Okay.
I should've been clear, sorry about that. Um line one oh six, elevator repair, I'm sorry, we're ready, right, repair and permits, one oh six.
Well, one oh five.
Okay, one oh five, that's the maintenance department.
Using their own vehicles?
Well, it's probably uh the registration cost for them to go to school dude conference and the hotel cost.
Drive between schools.
No, 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 that's all, that's uh training.
This is just expenses and travel, right?
Yes, sir. Six, elevator repair and permits, one oh seven HVAC controls and repairs, one oh eight, water and sewer repairs. One oh nine, boiler inspection fees, one ten contracted fire prevention, one eleven, fire alarm and intercom. One twelve contracted permits. Line one thirteen rentals and leases, line one fourteen, uh travel reimbursement out of county. Line one fifteen licensing expense.
Who does that, I'm sorry, who's one fourteen covers, is that still?
Oh, we're still on the maintenance.
Still in the maintenance.
Yes, sir, sixty-five eighty, that code over there.
Workshop above there, and that's ten, and there's fifty-five thousand for the travel part outside of county. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh one, line one sixteen, vehicle liability insurance, and I've talked to Joe, he knows that he's gonna have to reduce. One of his lines to increase that line for next year, we're just gonna look at that a little bit closer as we get further on. Office supplies for the maintenance department, twenty-five hundred, pest controls, twenty thousand, uniforms, thirteen thousand five hundred. General repair parts and materials, one seventeen five, cabinet repair parts and materials, twenty-five thousand. Carpenter repair parts and materials, twenty-five thousand, floor refishing materials, twenty-five thousand. Child nutrition repair parts and materials, twenty-five thousand, doors and locks, twenty-five thousand. Electrical materials, twenty-five thousand, HVAC materials, fifty-five thousand, paint materials, twenty-five thousand. Plumbing materials, twenty-five thousand, if y'all can just stop right there, if you'll recall, board last year when we were uh at this time of year presenting the budget. Prior years, all of those have been lumped into one line, and so going into this year, uh Mister Buchanan wanted to break those out by his departments. And again, you may see those change, those dollars change, he's gonna wait till we get to the end of the fiscal year and see how that, that actually fell out for actual. But um I do think that's a little bit clearer and has worked well, would you agree for this year for him to?
Uh so, well, that's what I was asking, that's why I was getting ready to ask, so.
Prior years, it was one lump sum, it was a big lump sum.
Breaking it out to see if, if you do need twenty-five thousand here, or if you need something else.
Limiting you though, is it where you can't?
It is the same number I had before, I just give it an area to go to.
Can you shift it from one to the other?
Yes.
We do, and Mister Rogers, the board, as long as on that sixty-five, sixty-five eighty, as long as um. We stay within those expenses, we go, we don't hold up his orders, in other words, if he's like over on the cabinet, we let him go through because. What I've gotta watch from a legal standpoint is that that sixty-five, and you'll see a budget amendments come through if we.
Okay.
Okay, line one thirty, gas and diesel fuel, fifty-five thousand, sixty-five eighty, all is twenty-five hundred. Uh line one thirty-one is twenty-five hundred all, one, line one thirty-two, tires and tubes, five thousand. And one thirty-three, equipment inventory, thirty thousand, line one thirty-four, license and title fees, twenty-five hundred. And we're through with maintenance, and we're on to finance.
Is a five thousand enough for tires? I mean, what, don't we go through more, or do you have, is that just for maintenance and the, and then you have?
What we do, what we have to do, and I'll explain that a little bit in, in, in that we get to my part at the end, but basically, the state transportation budget. Pays for lots of those things, and by law, what we have to do is charge it back to the department it goes back to. And so our department, once we put those things on, we have to charge those back to, to Joe or to Allison or to my IT staff. Or whoever might be the, you know, the responsible party, and so those are split up through the budget because of that.
Okay.
As far as the buses, the state.
Uh I do have a question about the uh one thirty-three, what does that mean, I don't understand what that means. Come in inventory.
That just means if we, if it, he purchases equipment that's over a dollar amount, like five thousand dollars. It's considered inventoried equipment, we actually put less dollar valued equipment, that's just kind of the, what the state recognizes. Is if it's over, I think it's five thousand, we have to inventory and put it on our fixed asset system, but we put other less valued items as well. Does that make sense?
Get the inventory on hand.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine, I didn't know what it.
I don't know what those items would be, I'm sure Mister Buchanan knows, it's probably some big power tool that I would never use. We don't use those in finance. Alright, are we ready? Okay, line one thirty-five, the sixty-six ten series, that is the finance department. Those are my three finance uh personnel, two payroll clerks and one accounts payable clerk. Line one thirty-six, uh additional responsibility stopping, that is my additional responsibility stopping of thirty-five hundred. And assistant finance officer, additional responsibility stopping of two thousand. Line one thirty-seven is overtime pay, I have one lead payroll clerk that um works over. And um we have reduced that line from two thousand nine ten, which was twenty-six thousand actual. To twenty-seven eighty-three, and, and again, was just the one, our, my lead person that I need to stay. Matching hospitalization and retirement social security follows. Finance department workshop expense and allowable travel. One forty-two contracted equipment, um I was, this was the line I was talking about earlier to Mister Jim, Jim Harley Francis. You'll see this budgeted every year, if you went and looked at a historical expenditures, you're gonna see no historical expenditure. But I needed in my budget because I have two very specialized printers in the finance department. One is a printer that is yay big, that uses, prints the green bar paper, the other is a printer that we have to have a specialized. For the Micker on the bottom of a check, and to print all of our checks so that they'll scan appropriately when they go through, a Micker. Micker ink. And so um again, from a historical spending, you know, I don't, I don't spend that every year, but I do need it budgeted just in the event that one of those went down.
Okay.
On average, have you got, about what have you had to spend so far, and we'll knock on wood, we don't have to, but.
Uh you mean, in, in recent years?
Yeah.
When, I don't, not know, not since I've been there in two thousand eleven have we had to, now, that Micker printer.
Yes.
We baby that thing, I mean, we are almost to the point of taking it home and rocking it every night, it sure turns.
Yeah, but that printer be more than that, to eat that budget alive if you had to replace it, right?
And then pro- probably, I've not had to look at that, and then the other part, problem, the green bar printer, paper. The printer is fine, we're having, we're striving to find, people don't use that big green bar paper.
And it's expensive to buy that paper.
It is, yes, sure, exactly.
Any, any roll feed paper anymore is.
It is, alright.
I still use old Okidatas, so yeah, I know, you buy that paper, you just pay for it.
Yeah, uh travel reimbursement out of county, seventeen fifty, and that along, that's line one forty-three and line one forty-one. Those are used in combination, my, the assistant finance officer and myself go each year to the DPI conference in July. And then we have a NASBO conference in February that we attend for finance officers. Line one forty-four is my fidelity bond, um required by law, this year, my co- my fidelity bond cost was. One hundred seventy-five dollars, but I, if I buy a car, that's gonna go up. As my debt increases, that, that cost goes up. Um one forty-five supplies and materials for the finance department, again, those are specialty items like our checks. And um there'd be two um overlays, that types of things. Uh one forty-six, computer software and supplies, that's a large item, but it pays for TRA, which is the school. Uh software that our school bookkeepers use, it pays for the K twelve, which is our software for accounts payable and payroll, general ledger. It ke- pays for the COOK spreadsheets, this is a copy of the COOK spreadsheets you're looking at, and it pays for digital design. We uh order blank checks, uh they're not pre-numbered or anything, and then we pay for an overlay. For that, so that if someone were to break in, they really couldn't do a whole lot with a, a piece of paper, it's got a, it's got a watermark. Special watermark on it, but as far as being pre-numbered or anything, it's just blank, and we pay uh an overlay fee. Line one forty-seven, report parts and material, five hundred dollars. Uh we have used that in the last couple of years um as needed if one of the desk printers at one of our stations goes down. Line one forty-eight um is computer software and supplies, that is the uh line that we used to pay for the HRMS system. Line one forty-nine is our two and a half HR department clerical staff. Um ha- the half position is shared with the uh Title One Director, and so Title One money picks up the other half of that cost. Their matching benefits follow. Line one fifty-three is a school secretary at Wayne'sville Middle School, and quite honestly, that's probably a miscoding. It probably needs to be a five thousand, but we'll just leave her where she's at, if that's okay. Lines one fifty-four through. One fifty-eight, where you see the red, that is um where we pay for two IT specialists out of O-O three. Um recently, two, Mister Todd Trantham merged two positions into one. That one position is now over in eight oh six, so we reduced the cost for the one on this side. Line one fifty-five is the additional responsibility stopping of uh the IT and media supervisor. And one fifty-nine is three, central office clerical, that is the administrative assistant to the superintendent and board. The administrative assistant to the associate superintendent and the front desk clerk. On one sixty is the central office custodian position. Their matching benefits follow. On one sixty-four is volunteer accident insurance. That is something we've paid every year, Doctor Garrett and I are looking into that to see if we even need to pay that, um. Continue to pay that, it's just something that we've paid, I don't know that we need that, but we, we are, huh?
Volunteer accident insurance, that's like.
For volunteers.
Yeah.
But I'm not so su- I think, I would think that they would be covered under our general liability. Um so we're, I forwarded you an email this, this afternoon actually about that, and so we'll look at that, so we might save seven hundred dollars there. And uh line one sixty-five through line one sixty-seven is the child nutrition director, extra pay for extra work stopping and matching benefits. Line one sixty-eight is child nutrition, repair parts and labor, and that is the swap that we made, we talked about, I think last month. After the compliance visit in the fall, and we just swapped the cost, us and Fund Five for the bookkeeper. This allows Joe to um and his staff to not have to get three quotes on every, on things that they buy. To repair some of the equipment in our cafeterias.
Okay, um this is, so one sixty-seven, one sixty-eight is coming, is child nutrition?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And you said this is a swap that they, that should be in the child nutrition budget, correct?
When you see her, her side of the budget, you're gonna see an increase in clerical and a decrease in repair parts.
Okay, so.
Just flip flopping.
Just flip, okay.
Okay, alright, um O-O five, program O-O five, line one sixty-nine, that is um. Called additional responsibility stopping, and that is for principal level, um if you'll recall. Principals are categorized as principal three, four, five, six, based on their certified staff. The state will only recognize if the number of state paid employees. However, we have a hundred and nine non-state paid certified positions. And so we have principals that might be, they ha- they're supervising enough to be a, a principal four, for example. And the state is only recognizing them as a principal three.
We have some of those teachers.
And so we pick that um offset up in local, currently, we have six principals that have that. And that runs about six hundred and seventy-five dollars a month, and again, that's something that changes from year to year because. You know, we put our lowest cheapest folks in local, and we put some, the next cheapest folks in title, as Title One teacher swaps. And so we don't really look, when I'm doing that, I don't really look at um the school.
So you're saying sixty-nine, one sixty-nine, one seventy and one seventy-one are all for assistant principals or just?
The one sixty-nine line is, it, they're separated out. The one sixty-nine line is, is based on the principal level, if it's a three or four. The lines one seventy and one seventy-one, those are the extra pay for extra work stoppings that are paid to assistant principals, one seventy. And one seventy-one is extra pay for extra work paid to principals and Dr. Garrett, I think, is ready to review that when we get. All the way through the budget if y'all have specific questions.
So all three of those lines are for principals and assistant principals. Correct?
That's correct.
Principals and assistant principals.
That's correct.
Let's see.
So that's sixty-four, thirty-eight. What was that equal? I can't do math that quick.
And then you've got there additional benefits there.
Mr. Kirkpatrick, that started in the early nineties. I mean, it hasn't changed since.
Well, and that's what I was thinking, that didn't change, but now did we not change something for the assistant principals and the principals when they first. Uh, travel expense, didn't we start cutting?
What I recall changing is, you know, our assistant principals used to be eleven-month employees and we cut them down to ten, ten months and two weeks. And that was two years ago when we did our teacher assistance, cause we had to, to make the budget fit.
I think it's also something, and it seemed like it, it may have been five or six years ago, we, we looked at the budget and it was something about travel, cause. Some of them was getting a travel expense, it's like two or three thousand dollars and then we started phasing that out, new principals didn't get the. And the assistant principals.
Get for travel, what do our principals get?
Is that what's down here in these next lines?
They don't get any local. They don't, they don't.
That's what I was saying, I think that was built into the bu- budget. That may have been ten years ago. I know that we started.
That extra pay amount includes travel if they. If they get in a car and come to a principal's meeting and go to a ballgame and.
Go to Hendersonville or whatever, yeah.
So they don't get a separate mileage reimbursement if they do that?
They might, I guess if they go to Raleigh to a workshop. Charge something to a workshop code for a specialized travel.
For example.
For their regular travel.
Last Thursday night when Travis was going to Hendersonville, he did not get reimbursed for that and he drove his own vehicle.
Right, well, like I said, I think we started cutting out some of the travel expense, cause they was getting paid just a certain two or three thousand dollars a year. For supplement, but now that's been.
Been several years ago, Miss Kirkpatrick. I've never that, yes, we did that. We did that.
Cutting it out for the new principals and assistant principals.
That's quite a few years ago.
All right, one seventy-two.
Okay. One seventy-two, okay, those are the matching benefits, uh, social security and retirement. One seventy-eight, uh, principal AP staff development, uh, that's a school allocation. One seventy-nine copier costs to uh school allocation. Uh, travel reimbursement out of county, uh, that is travel reimbursement for the HR director. Travel reimbursement out of county, that is travel reimbursement for the culture, cultural arts foundation director. Travel reimbursement, line one eighty-two is travel reimbursement for associate superintendent. Line one eighty-three, travel reimbursement for policy driver's ed AD director. Line one eighty-four, travel reimbursement for elementary supervisor. Line one eighty-five, travel reimbursement for middle-high supervisor. Line one eighty-six, cellphone reimbursement for principals and assistant principals.
Hold on that a minute.
Now those uh line of items, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, that is paid. By mileage or is that fifteen hundred dollars it goes?
No, that is reimbursement.
Mileage.
That is by, by.
But it could be, it may not just be miles, it could be the hotel cost or. Registration, meals, yeah.
They don't get fifteen hundred dollars a year, that's what you're building in, you gotta check when they.
We read.
Turn in your receipts and we read.
Nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixteen.
Reimburse up to that amount and then it.
State rate.
All right, uh, one eighty-six, how many people is in that line item?
That is principal and assistant principals. They each uh receive thirty dollars a month. Depending on their months of employment. I'm sorry, I don't know that count.
I think Dr. Anne said it.
I have.
Yeah, we'll talk, I just want to write that.
And if you're half like, we have two assistant principals who are half, uh, title-one teachers and half APs, well, they would just get half of that. And it would be based upon their ten months of employment. Does that make sense?
Hmm, yes, but then teachers, but then teachers also get, get cell phones, so that's where the other half would come in.
Well, no, as if I were a half assistant principal, I'm only gonna get it for the half of me that's the assistant principal.
And then you're only getting it for ten, so you get it for five months and so ten months probably.
So they're, they're getting fifteen dollars. For ten months.
For ten, yeah.
Well, no, they don't wanna get thirty. So they get fifteen.
All right, one eighty-seven.
Okay, uh, membership dues, that is our um accreditation Saks Casey line. On one eighty-eight, office operations, that's school allocation. One eighty-nine, graduation expense, school allocation. One ninety, travel reimbursement, um, athletic transportation, school allocation. One ninety-one, uh, purchase of equipment, athletics, school allocation. Contracted services, uh, gate security guard, that's a school allocation. We give each high school twelve thousand dollars. To pay toward the security guard. They use parking fees to pay for the remainder.
All right, go back to uh. Please, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
One ninety and one ninety-one, so you're saying you're giving that, one ninety, one ninety's going to how many schools?
I believe just.
Two high.
The two high schools, yes, sir.
And then also one ninety-one is the two high schools.
Um, I'm hesitant to say that. Uh, it could be, it could also go to element, I mean, hu- elementary, middle schools.
All right, let me ask you. When you give that money. Line item number ninety-one and ninety-two. Yeah, or ninety and ninety-one, I'm sorry, ninety and ninety-one are those two line items. At the school level and used for what we're giving it to them for. Or are they just putting in their general fund and saying?
I have not audited that. I can't direct it.
That's another thing, they have to apply for it to get it, right?
Anytime I've said school allocation, that means we allocate.
Just allocate them. They can do what they want to.
If you take that and you put it in your athletic budget code and then you pay for things like resurfying helmets and new balls and. Paying officials and fuel for the bus, take you to Hendersonville, you pay for those things that your. Revenue's gonna cover. That's particularly hard to help for people in middle schools.
I started saying middle schools probably need it more than the high schools, cause they don't generate as much.
On percentile basis, they certainly do. They don't have the kind of cost, but they don't, they don't, they don't have the revenues so significantly lower. That if we didn't help the middle school some.
They could.
He just wouldn't have.
Yeah.
Well, and the reason why I was asking, I mean, if we're saying purchase of equipment for athletics. And then they're spending it on something else. I don't know whether that line item needs to say purchase of equipment for athletics. See what I'm saying?
I do, yes, sir.
It's pretty much a athletics allocation.
Yeah, I mean, if it's athletics money, that's where it needs to be.
Are they buying mats or nets or are they buying?
Right, I mean, if they come up and say, well, the central office is not giving us no money to buy new nets, well, you've got five thousand five hundred dollars there.
What we could do is ask them to turn in receipts for it and in that way we would monitor.
Could they use any of that money to offset some of the assistant coaches as well or is?
It's not allocated for that.
Oh, yeah, it shouldn't be. It shouldn't be, but it probably is.
Cause we were able to, uh, well, if you, when we go down, you'll look at the ones that we have been able to put back in and, and the assistant coaches was one of them.
That's, uh, cause that's what I'm saying, they, they made us, you know, point about not being funded for assistant coaches, so I mean, is this money that they could. Have used for that as well?
Right, no, it's not been typically for that. It's been for.
Recertifying helmets.
Non-personnel expenses, it's been for equipment and travel and.
But that was when you was there.
Official, right, paying the official contracts, but not our personnel.
Right, well, and it, and I'm not trying to get nitpicky here, yet, yet. We have got money that we need to make sure that we're saving and spending. Where that it's supposed to be used at and if they're using it something else and then we've got athletics like a Bethel. That needs something. Or Tuscaloosa, they're sitting there saying, well, we don't have no money, but they spent that money somewhere else.
We could do one of two things. We could ask for receipts or we could reimburse when they turn in the receipts. And that way we would know what it was.
What this bit's been on.
Or you could always just change the line and say this is money we're giving the school, spend it the way you want to, but. I don't think you need to do that. I think it needs to be that line item.
I think the prudent thing to do would be at the end of the year to ask them to submit, they can punch a button in their finance program.
Yes, you're right.
They could submit a record of equipment and non-personnel costs that they've spent. And it, it just needs to be over, it just needs to be warranted in our allocation and I bet you would.
Right, and then, I mean, and it may be one of those things, if it is larger, I don't see no problem if they need help, that we might be able to. But you see what I'm saying? I mean, it's not that we're going to pay for everything, but we need to help out our schools the way we can, yet they need to help us out.
The easiest thing for Angie, since, so she's got writing on checks, the same amount of people would be get a.
Expenditure report.
Expenditure report. Something like that to make sure that they're spending as much as we're giving them all over the place.
So that's per school, the ten thousand?
No, uh, uh, Mr. Clark, we gave each of the three middle schools fifteen hundred and we gave each of the high schools three thousand.
I mean, you're not talking. I was gonna say, cause ten thousand wasn't. One football team is, it's like four thousand dollars a. Player, right, or something like that for the helmets or something, maybe a hundred dollars and stuff.
You have to recertify the helmets.
Right, but you've also got to look at your biggest money makers, your football, most of the football program is carrying itself.
I know that Coach Chapel has told the parents that he bought the concussion helmets and they were pretty expensive, but they're worth it. They've got the, I'm doing a symbol, symbol, but they've got the, whatever that's called.
Cut out, that's.
Yeah.
Has the impact.
Okay, uh, that's fine, I was just wondering.
I'd have to pay the officials. For your school year, that, that's up.
No, that's, I mean, that's not.
I think they'd have paid the officials contracts. No.
One ninety-three.
Okay, one ninety-three, one ninety-four are the same, that's um additional responsibility stoppings for s- six central office administrators. At thirty-five hundred each. Matching retirement follows. And we're in program oh-oh-seven. Um, program oh-oh-seven is instructional support for our new board members. You'll see that uh this year we have about two positions and it's point two-five of a social worker and one position, one media clerk position. Point seven of a guidance. We gets, we receive state funding in oh-oh-seven and state sixty-nine at risk to also pay for these positions. Again, we take the cheapest folks and try and, and just make it fit within those dollar amounts. Um, you'll see that going all the way down through there. Um, line two oh-four. That is a social worker travel. It's got out of county, but it can be in county as well. It's just um on my general ledger like that and I pulled it straight out of my general ledger. Um, travel reimbursement, um, again, the fifty-three-twenty, that's all soc- any type of social worker expenses. Uh, that could be, uh, you know, traveling to a workshop. We also have some federal money. Lisa uses her federal money as much as she can to, uh, homeless, um, to offset some of that cost as well.
Is there a reason there's, there, those two are separate line items on the?
I do not know that answer, I'm so sorry. I do not. I don't know if at one time there was.
That's what I was wondering too.
Yeah, elementary, if they served like elementary, they had a two oh-one, that's usually what those user codes are for, to separate like elementary.
Usually that code is so we know, I can look at that code and go, well, that's Ron or that's me or that's. It tells me who's spending that money, so Felicia may be dedicating it east-west or elementary high or something with those codes.
Okay.
The two hundred codes.
Uh, fifty-three-twenty, that's supplies and materials for social work, social workers. Uh, the next line is um one media position. Substitute costs associated with that position and matching benefits. Line two twelve, point seven of a guidance counselor and the matching benefits. Line two sixteen, that's uh in-county travel for ga- for guidance. Again, I've, it says out of county, but that's not. Two seventeen uh is supplies and materials for guidance. And two seventeen, two eighteen, two nineteen, those are all guidance counselor, supplies and materials. I know that two fifty-three is like. Uh, Dr. Noldy said, that's Ron, he supervises the elementary level. Um, those folks that serve, that have, provide guidance opportunities or guided service to elementary and the next one is middle-high. That's Carol Douglas, uh, for, she supervises the guidance at, at that level. Line two twenty is what we pay to the county health department for nursing services. That equates to about. Two point three full-time equivalent positions. We, of course, don't get two point three people. We got, we get about probably eight or nine folks.
Yeah, about seven now.
And broken into little, yeah. Yeah, but the, it equates to about two point three, if they were full-time positions. Nurse travel reimbursement, one hundred dollars, uh, line fifty-eight forty. Um, we use that, I think that's for some, um, if we need, like. Diabetic training items or those types of things, anything that kind of falls under that nurse scene, latex gloves, yeah. Um, line two twenty-three, uh, that is point seven, remaining point seven of uh the. IT supervisor, media supervisor, she's in oh-oh-seven because she uh is the media supervisor. And the matching benefits that follow that. Lines two twenty-seven through. Two thirty-two and on to the next page, two thirty-three, two thirty-four, those are in program oh-oh-nine, they're in the middle. And what that's called is just guaranteed benefits. Um, the longevity bonus, annual leave. Um, mentor pay, we do use some of that mentor pay and that varies year to year. Most of our mentor pay is paid out of title-two money, federal title-two. But there are some positions that we, you can't use federal dollars for a mentor and so we have to pay their mentor out of this and that varies. That changes year to year depending on who needs a mentor and where, uh, what area, uh, they're in. Uh, longevity, uh, that is for guaranteed benefit of any locally paid person that uh is eligible for longevity. Bonus leave and annual leave, uh, that is any local paid person that may leave us mid-year that we have to pay out their. Bonus and annual leave. Line two thirty-three, uh, work comp insurance cost, one hundred fifty thousand. And. Line two thirty-four, unemployment insurance cost, that uh runs the gamut in sixteen-seventeen, uh, we only, have only spent two thousand. About twenty-two hundred in, in unemployment cost, but in fifteen-sixteen, we spent nine thousand. So that's just kind of out there. And on the workers' comp, um, this year our workers' comp was one forty-nine, two seventy. But we uh try to put as much of that back into program areas, uh, like our federal programs. Uh, when we get to June, we'll have to look at their. Uh, when we get to June, we'll have to look at their to- their actual, um, salary expenditures. And they can get it, we can charge them a small percent, and, and we will move part of that expenditure over. Um, also, usually, child nutrition picks up, what, forty thousand or so in workers' comp that we charge, we pay it out of local. But we charge her program back, but if you recall, this year, we're working with her because they paid the merit pay. And so we're gonna offset her workers' comp and not charge that full amount, cause she, um, we, she paid her folks that were eligible for merit pay. She didn't have the budget for that, so we're gonna try to help her budget by not fully charging out the workers' comp cost to her program. Does that make sense? Any cost on oh-oh-nine? Okay, just a hundred lines left, we're almost there. Is anybody else hot, or is it just me?
Need to take a break?
Okay, uh, lines two-thirty-five through two-forty, uh, that is our local CTE cost. Uh, you'll see the first line is our reinstatement lines, and I, I think this is our first one that we've had. We are reinstating, or the, the budget reflects a reinstatement of thirty-two thousand to our local CTE program, be, bringing that up to seventy-two thousand. In fifteen-sixteen, that budget was, uh, eighty-two thousand forty dollars. Lines two-forty-one through two-forty-four, um, that pays for three teacher assistant positions, um, at the, I believe at the middle schools. Line two-forty-five, um, our special needs program. This budget reflects a reinstatement of ninety thousand dollars, bringing the local thirty-two budget to one nineteen thou- one hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars. In fifteen-sixteen, that budget was one hundred thirty thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars. Line two-forty-six is local AIG, seventy-five hundred. Line two-forty-seven, uh, transfer to charters, uh, that shows an increase of about fifty-two stu- students for next year. I may be under, um, a little bit because the state, um, that would be allowing for Shining Rock to have four hundred and four students. I think the state has approved for them to have as many as four hundred and twenty-seven. But I've, I've spoken with Dr. Garrett about this. I don't wanna increase that on our side until we, we see that we have to. Uh, this year, they started out with three, charging us for three hundred and fifty students. The last invoice that I received on them, they charged us for three hundred and thirty-five students, so they've had a, a decrease. So again, uh, Dr. Garrett and I have, uh, uh, talked with her about what her comfort level was, and we'd kind of like to wait and see what that actual comes in next year, if that's okay.
Get that many students in them little bitty buildings they got?
They have what?
Get that many students in those buildings they got? I go by them every morning when I go to work, and I tell you what, they don't look that big.
So that's what, uh, that, that is for about fifty-two students, more or less.
Now that, the thirty-two thousand and the ninety thousand, is that the?
Where we at?
Two-forty-five.
Okay.
Two-thirty-five, two-forty-five.
Those are, those were reinstatements.
That's the reinstatements that we cut.
Yes, sir. That's not a full reinstatement, that's why.
That's just some reinstatement, that's not a full reinstatement.
Yes, sir.
Now, if we cut just a year ago, and now we're reinstating it, so.
They, they, how did they do this year with that cut? I mean, where did the money come from to fund that program or fund that?
Well, I'll, I'll be honest with you, on the EC side, um, we have a, what's called maintenance of effort. And we have to meet our maintenance of effort each year. Basically, what we spend locally, um, uh, in EC, we have to maintain, maintain that effort each year. And so one of the things, um, earlier, I, we were talking about administrators. And you'll see that the EC director's salary and benefits are this year being paid out of local money. And last year, that half position was paid out of state, oh-oh-two, but I've moved it over to local because I've got to somehow, and I'll probably wind up having to try to pick up some of their TAs or sub-costs or something, because I can't drop below. Once we pay the, the, uh, supplement in March, I'll take and see what we have paid to their te- their teachers. And they're coded like a fifty-two-ten, and that tells us and the state that those were EC teachers or EC staff. So I'll have to take that and see what we've spent in other areas of the local budget. And then I've got to compare that to what we actually spent last year, because if we drop below that, there's four areas that you've got, and you can meet one maintenance of e- effort in one of those four areas, and we are only down to local. We cannot catch up on the state part and the other two parts. Um, Joan explained to me, and it was not something that involved finance and you know, but the only one that we're down to is the local maintenance of effort. If we don't, um, provide that, then we use, we lose our Title VI money. And Ms. Joan Farrel made sure that I was fully aware of that before she retired, and we sat down and went over that.
So basically, we have to put that ninety thousand dollars back in there.
Yeah, and so, like I said, this year, I'm trying to.
Cause we really didn't cut funding, we just looked at where we were getting the money at differently.
Yeah, one way of looking at it is, there are lots of federal and state funds where they tell you you cannot supply it. So, you've got thirty teachers, and you're, you're, you're paying five of them out of local. And you have a big budget crisis, and the next year, you still have thirty teachers, cause you need them. If you start paying more of them out of the federal money than you were paying them out of local, then you're supplying the local with the federal money.
Right.
That's just an example of, of one of the things. They, they, they will let us take federal money and add stuff. And they won't let us take federal money typically and pay for what we've been already paying for, for years.
For example, this House Bill thirteen, you can't take that out of Title I or federal funds because it's a state requirement. Well, if you were to take those ten teachers out of Title I and pay for them that way, then you would be supplying them.
Where did we get, I mean, where are we coming up with the ninety thousand? I mean, where's it coming from, exactly?
That was Dr. Garrett's recommendation.
I mean, but where's the money coming, where are we gonna get it at?
Well. It's, it's in the budget.
Were we taking off the rest of the, yeah.
And it's already a part of the budget.
That's where the slide increase from per pupil funding formula, I guess.
Right, well, and also, I mean, I'm just skimming through here, I mean, it looks like you've, uh, refunded one, two, three, four.
If you'll go to the last page, it'll show you the total in reinstatements being recommended.
The last page.
Yes, sir, page nine, yeah, or, yeah, yours.
Three hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and fifteen?
Hmm, yes.
All right, now, I'm skipping ahead.
Okay, I'm back.
But it looks like. Three hundred and twenty-three thousand and fifteen, all right, let's finish out. Two-forty-eight.
Two-forty-eight, uh, twenty-five thousand goes, that, uh, pays for str- student drug screening program and the Alert Now or Blackboard system. Um, lines two-forty-nine through two-fifty-two goes to pay a partial teacher in the LEP program. The state, on the state side, we receive a hundred and thirty-one thousand, and if we did not have the ABC transfers on the state, we would not have enough money. Just on the dollar portion to pay for that, but that's, um, just a, a portion of a, eh, uh, LEP teacher.
You get a hundred and thirty-one from the state.
Yes, sir. And she also gets, uh, one of, federal one-oh-four money, a little bit of money, um, and that is ESL, not LEP, ESL. Um, lines two-fifty-three through two-fifty-six, um, our current local, local fifty-six transportation budget, which is associated with yellow buses only, is ninety-five hundred. Uh, this budget recommends increasing that budget to bring it up to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And members of the finance committee will recall Mr. Todd Trantham addressing this issue with you, um, a couple of months ago, and ca- he cut routes, he could have cut a couple of more routes, do you want to?
Yeah, we. I'll talk about that if it's okay at the end, I've got that in my presentation at the end.
He's gonna talk about that at the end, is that okay with everybody?
Yes, it's transportation, two-fifty-three through two-fifty-six.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
That is yellow bu- yellow bus use only. Everyone okay?
Okay.
Yes, two-fifty-three goes down, and the line tells what it is, blow it.
Yeah, okay, well. I, I just, I seen that, thank you.
Okay.
Transportation.
Two-fifty-seven.
Line two-fifty-seven is local instructional supplies that's allocated to our schools. Um, we will, uh, reduce that by fifty thousand before, or the equivalent of one beginning teacher before, um, allocating to the schools, just, just like we're gonna do on state sixty-one. We're gonna reduce that by one teacher before allocating to the schools, and that's to help try to pay for those nine teachers.
That's a beginning teacher?
Yes. Fifty thousand is about the cost of a beginning teacher this year. It might be a little bit less, like forty, um, so. Um, lines two-fifty-nine through two-sixty-three, um, this is for the ALC. And I am budgeting two full-time positions at a mid-salary range. Mr. Ledford has, um, some of the folks he, have a lot of experience. Um, one of them does not have benefits, I'm hoping, then I'm kind of in the ballpark by, um, projecting for two mid-range, uh, mid-range paid employees. Um, he is, if you'll recall, the, the county gave us an, eh, an extra thirty-two thousand this year. Um, that was a one-time allotment only, and then, if you'll recall, also, Mr. Ledford is in his third year of his Twenty First Century Grant, and that goes down every year. And so next year, we'll expect another decrease in that grant. So this is to try, I, I called him and spoke with him and asked him kind of what he thought. And he felt comfortable with this number, and he said, of course, if he, you know, can squeeze out money anywhere else, he would certainly do that.
And what he has done with this grant, he used to, we used to pay for four halftime positions that they did not get benefits, but through the grant that he recently received, he was able to take those people into full-time, so we will maintain those two.
Well, now, but I thought, when it comes to one of those grants, did we not say that we might not cover those positions once that grant was done?
But the grant's not done, though. With, with the grants that he has received, he was able to take those four halftime and make them into two full-time because he needed them for the students. So now, we're gonna be charged for the two full-time instead of the four halftime.
But did he not hire somebody under that grant that we said that we might not?
Okay, these are class.
I'm either confused by me if we, if we set and tell someone that after the grant's done, that we might not finish out the employment of those people, they might need to.
Okay, these are teachers, and they were four halftime that were covered with the grant, then he received additional funds. So he was able to bring them on full-time, so now you've got, instead of four halves, you've got two full-time people.
Full-time.
And that's what we.
Same thing that we was talking, uh, there was a grant that he come, that he asked for his pay to go up.
And his secretary to go up.
And his secretary to go up, is this the same grant?
This is Twenty First Century Grant is what I'm talking about.
Does anybody know one?
It.
Yeah, I, because, yeah, he came up to the work session.
It is a similar.
And he got, uh, it was a million something dollars.
Over four years.
Four years.
Over four years.
And this is year three, I believe, isn't it?
So this is this grant, so this is the grant that we increased his salary.
Now, like I said, I think he filled some positions. I don't think it was just the four halftime combining into two full-time.
There, there are, there are a number of other positions funded by the Twenty First Century Grant. What, what we, what we allocated to, uh, Kyle, because I made that allocation five years ago or something, were four halftime positions. And what he's done, and we allowed him to do it, you know, we, we brought him to you at different times, is to take those four and make this one a whole and this one a whole, and it costs us more money because of the benefit cost. Uh, so our, our expenses out of the local budget are, used to be, you know, instead of having four quarters, you know, now we've got two fifty-cent pieces. But it actually cost us more.
Used to be sixty-eight, and now it's ninety.
So with.
Cost us more because of the benefit cost. All the other positions, um, that are funded through Century Twenty-One um, are positions that we have not made a commitment to pick up. You know, with local funds after the grant's over. But, but those four halves or some equivalent thereof, we will need to operate with or without a grant.
I think what you were talking about, Steve, is when he came up and asked people for, he'd asked for promotion from, from being a principal three to a four.
Well, yeah, but that was the same, that money that we, that he asked was the grant that was going to be used. And at that time, he asked for a couple of other things, and we, we made it clear, okay, if you pay for that out of this.
Out of that, those funds.
Out of this funds, it's no guarantee that it's going to be paid for.
With the fund.
Administration is not guaranteed that it's going to be paid for after that four years. So, I mean, I, I, I was just wondering if this, you're showing that it's a reinstatement fee is what line you're putting it under.
Well, he took it away from him last year.
So we took that money away from him, and he paid for it with the grant?
Well, no, what happened was the county commissioners came out, and then we ended up paying twenty-eight additional thousand, and they paid the thirty-two thousand.
So how'd it go from sixty thousand to ninety-two thousand?
Correct.
It looks like we're paying, we cut it last year, but it's, we're reimbursing a lot more than what we cut.
Correct.
So how is that working?
Because we're not gonna get the thirty-two thousand that the county gave us this year.
Yeah, but we, we only paid twenty-eight, we only reimbursed twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight and thirty-two, is what he said.
I'm, I'm just projecting what the cost would be for mid-range two full-time employees. And trying to bring our current budget, as not, including the local county appropriation, adding what the, what extra money we would need for two full-time.
It's projected, not actual.
Right, but what are, the, those two people are still there, correct?
Well, two, well, I guess.
What, what are, what are their salaries then? I mean, what are?
Well.
I mean, if sixty thousand covered them last year, I mean, that's thirty.
They were part-time without benefits last year.
Yeah, there were four part-time.
Yeah, four halftime people. And now what he has done is he's taken those four and turned them into two.
This, when you say this year and last year, you're talking about two thousand fifteen, sixteen, that was halftime.
There were four halftime positions that did not have a lot of benefits.
Well, they were halftime and went to hold.
Right, and now there are two full-time people.
And seventeen and eighteen.
And when did, when did we approve to, to allow them to go to a full-time position then?
That was a couple, I mean, that, I sort of remember, I mean, I can't remember how many employees.
Well, if it ha- it had to have been this year, this current school year.
Current school year, but I thought there's only two instead of four that we approved to go full-time.
That's it. They're not four, they're not four time, they're not four people.
Still got two half-times, then you're gonna have two that's gonna be converted.
But we're only paying for the two full-time.
Uh, you only got two instead of four.
Let's break this down. You four guys used to work for us part-time and got no benefits.
Fifteen, sixteen.
Now, just two of you are working full-time.
Two of us at all, there are two gone.
We're not paying for the medium.
Those other two, if they're doing anything, they're doing it with grant money, we have not guaranteed.
Just the salary for his folks, just salary only, no benefits. Uh, for one, two, three, four, five, is two hundred fifty-one thousand. There's no benefits at all. And so that's kind of what I was trying to back into for two full-time positions. Or I can break it down and do four halftime positions with benefits, if that would make everybody feel more comfortable, it's.
They're not there anymore.
Right.
So, she's making that up, you can't give benefits.
I was getting ready to say you can't give, wasn't that what we just talked about?
It is.
I don't sometimes, Angie.
So he's got five full-time employees.
What are you most comfortable with, I'm willing to do it.
Well, Mr. Francis, you can always go back and say, we're only gonna pay for the four halftime.
Right, I, I just don't understand how we approved two full-times when we cut their, their budget last year, knowing.
He must have received additional grant monies, because remember when he got that extra allocation, you and I talked about it last summer? And then all of a sudden, he got cut for the next round because he didn't spend all that he had the second round. And then all of a sudden he got cut for the next round because he didn't spend all that he had the second round.
So I, so he's got grant money on it, so I'm 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 still confused on how we're, how, if he's got grant money to pay for these positions, it's now falling back on us to to pay for them.
Well, he he, again, he can't take that grant money and supplant what we were providing before. We were providing two full-time equivalents before through four halves.
But I see where you're coming from, because you're saying.
We take that grant and and pay for some of that, then that's supplanting with the federal uh twenty-first century.
Cause you're saying you bumped it up fifty percent because we were paying sixty, now all of a sudden you got ninety.
Right.
Yeah, I get it.
So that's thirty thousand dollars more than.
If you maintain, then it would be sixty thousand.
Right, then what we, that's what we cut, basically.
Correct, you're reinstating what you cut, in other words, by the sixty.
Okay.
Do you want me to note that?
Well, I think you, I, yeah, I mean, I think you meant note what it, well, Miss Angie, I mean, what that's projecting, so something's gone.
Well.
I think what Mister Francis is saying, something has gone up by thirty thousand dollars.
Fifty percent, yeah.
And my guess is, looking at this, and I don't wanna say, I can't say name, but like, um, one of his teachers, I don't think has been there since when we were doing a half-time positions and he is, he makes basically forty-three hundred, he was not a beginning half-time teacher, does that make sense? No.
He he's not there now and we're.
He is there, but what I'm saying is he, we prob, we could, I would have to go back and research it, we probably had cheaper teachers. Does that make sense and?
And we weren't paying a bill.
And we were not paying them benefits.
We were just paying half-time.
Yeah, I I did, he did take that amount of person, yeah. I I think we, yeah, I I I think we can say, okay, for a long time Mark Etheridge has been a part-time person, he's retired. He doesn't wanna be full-time, okay, so he's obviously not one of the two full-time people. Right, so he goes over here um and he's doing other stuff for s- century twenty-one, I know he does some science education at other schools too. And then you've got a full-time person who's now bring, who now has benefit costs that we never paid for some of the part-time people.
Right, I just, I mean, well, it 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 just, I mean, that's thirty thousand dollars, it could offset some of that.
I get it.
Mandated, you know, these teachers, so I just.
Let me ask this question, is it, this may clear it up. If we were to go back to four.
Half-time.
Half-times.
So.
We'd save about thirty thousand dollars.
We would, and we've done that before, we have had employees in that program and we had a m- a money crunch and we said to them, I'm sorry, we're gonna hire all part-time people now. And we literally ripped some people from full-time to part-time to do that. And that can be done again, but that, you know, that you have to rip some people, we brought names to the board and said, we need to riff two full-time people and hire four part-time people, we did that three or four years ago.
Does he have any part-time Angie?
I am getting ready, if we took the four teachers.
Benefits.
Right now, what you're saying, we cut. Well, let me back it.
Sixty thousand.
We cut sixty thousand dollars.
And then they.
And then the county gave us thirty thousand of that.
Thirty-two and we had to come up with twenty-eight to match it.
Forty-eight.
But now we're adding in not only the.
Sixty.
The sixty that the county's given us, but we're adding in another thirty thousand.
Thirty-two thousand, yeah.
That, okay, if I take his four teachers.
We really didn't cut sixty because the county put in thirty-two and we put in twenty-eight.
Right, I guess, I guess.
Two that the county put in for us.
Simple question is, if they made it without the thirty thousand last year, why are we giving them thirty thousand more addition?
What you could say is you're only gonna give for the sixty thousand, like you're gonna maintain the budget like it was last year.
Right.
Okay, if if I can.
But we're adding thirty, so why are we adding thirty is my question.
Okay, I I hope I'm gonna answer it.
Okay.
Um, if we took his four existing teachers and like Dr. Noldy said, we took them back to fifty percent only, no benefits. It's only their salary, ten min, ten months, no benefits. The cost of that would be eighty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars, so ninety thousand, that would be the cost. If they stay where they are, the cost is gonna be closer to a hundred and twenty-two thousand because they're gonna have retirement, they're gonna have help, they're gonna pay part of the health insurance, uh they also are no, are not ten-month employees, they are now, some of them are eleven and some are twelve.
Are they gonna get a two percent pay raise?
Yes, yeah, I'm not including two percent on that, I'm just, I'm just saying what their current salaries are. If we if we did what y'all ask and and just uh budgeted for those four folks at half-time, no benefits, it's gonna cost us about ninety thousand dollars.
Angie, what was the budget?
Versus a hundred and twenty-two.
Versus a hundred and twenty-two.
Yeah. Now, now.
Cost of benefits.
Let me get the smoke cleared here a minute and talk about this, ah, you're saying that for the year seventeen, eighteen, we're taking those four part-time people and making two of them full-time? Or did we do it this year, sixteen, seventeen?
It's probably happened last year even and he's paid for those folks out of his twenty-first century money in combination.
I need to know.
At sixty-nine.
It's already been done, but he's paid for it.
Yes.
This year we're gonna pay thirty more thousand to him to cover it out of ver, out of the main budget.
Well, that is what is presented.
Right, we we went from four part-time from two thousand fourteen, fifteen, there's four part-time. Two thousand fifteen, sixteen, no, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, so fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, that's when.
Great school year.
Finance, ever who did it, I'm assuming it was voted on, correct?
That would be my assumption.
That would be my assumption, or he, that's when he decided to take four, move them into pay for them out of the century twenty-one.
Grant, uh-huh.
Grant.
Yep, you're on right there. Very short, thirty-two thousand. Now you don't have the grant.
Buddy buddy come up thirty-two thousand short last year, so that's where the county's money came. Well, I know that, yet I still think, we can sit here and be a dead horse and argue, I still think we've told him about that century twenty-one grant, I feel like, personal opinion, we are taking up something that we said that we was not going to do.
Right.
And what you could say Mister Kirkpatrick is, we're gonna continue to pay what we have paid in the past for those four half-time positions.
And then if you can make it work out and make them two full-time, that's fine, I mean, it. Well, what you're saying is keep the two full-time, but we're only gonna give you.
What you got last?
Ninety thousand, we're not giving you a hundred and twenty-two thousand, is what Angie said.
My suggestion would be for finance to look, you know, the finance committee to look at this a little bit closer and get some more information from from Kyle on how he funded those positions this year and.
Okay, our current local, local sixty-nine cost for folks in his program, the the salary alone is sixty-one thousand two forty-one, again, that's not any part of their benefit, because I I can just pull that up real, real fast here. But again, I guess what I was trying, if he, if they maintain full-time status or benefit status, regardless of if he finds another pot of money somewhere and, oh, sorry, then that's, that's what I was trying to simplify, but maybe I've made it muddier and I'll be glad to go back and just do four half-time positions.
I think this scenario is pretty easy to follow.
I think you've made it, you've simplified, but yet, I think it's one of those situations, his grant money is running out.
Thirty thousand difference.
Yes, it is.
Decreasing each year, right?
Decreasing each year and we made, made it clear that the grant money, whatever how he messed with it, we was not going to recover, we was not gonna cover what was not there.
Short falls. Is this decreasing the grant money, is that amount of money, how many, is that where it's at?
He, um, he, it went four hundred, four hundred, three twenty this year and then it goes down again next year and I'm sorry, I cannot remember if it's two fifty.
So correct.
There's a lot of your money right there, yeah, that's where it's at. Well, in fifteen, sixteen, somebody said, um, we wanna take these four positions to two full-times, we got enough grant money to cover. Now the grant money's gone and we don't have money to cover it, so now here it is in the budget.
Right, they're pushing it.
And I think, I I'm, I agree with Stephen, I do remember that topic coming up.
Well, I'm sure we say, and well, the grant ain't gonna make cover this year, but if they don't cover it next year, you're in trouble.
When the grant money runs out, we're not gonna continue. Yeah, I do think that the finance.
Well, now the year is gonna drop in. It's gone then, yeah, it's the third year.
And and I'm not saying Kyle might, he might find another grant, I'll take seven more. We hope he does.
Start to give us a solution.
Yes.
Which is, we tell him how much we're gonna fund, which is typically what we pay for the four halves.
What we did last year.
Traditionally.
Well, year before, before we made the cut.
Money to to do it, then we do it, if not, we go back to the four halves and the, the bad thing is we've got a couple of full-time people that we'll have to bring to.
Yeah, that's going to hurt.
And they may or may not stay, I think last time we did that, one stayed and one didn't.
Okay.
And and then again, if if he finds the grant money to cover them and bring them right back, it didn't.
Absolutely.
I've, uh, I have been asked for a short, two or three-minute recess, so we're gonna recess for about three minutes.
That's used to radiation. Um, reinstat- uh, suggested reinstatement, uh, back up to seventy thousand and fifteen, sixteen year was a hundred thousand, so we're no qualification.
That's good, thirty thousand.
If you remember last year, um, the foundation had, didn't it, enough that they had about a hundred percent?
The way four senior money coming from. Foundation for something similar this year?
I've asked, um, Ginny to ask them to consider a teacher, because I think a teacher would really help us on this if we ever get to come up with the supplement or the ten additional teachers that we have to hire, either budget one or budget two, it will be very helpful to have a teaching position.
Where would that teaching position, is that one of the additional teachers that we're gonna have to do or if they don't do it, then?
It'd be part of the supplement then, so either way, we would use it either, like you said, in the ten that we have to hire, or it would be used in the supplement. Where we would pay one out of local, then we could switch that over to the supplement.
Could they fund, could that be a reoccurring fund for them or?
They want to do that, but it's something that we could certainly ask them to do each year.
At least give us, you know, two years or three years. Okay, all right, ROTC.
Okay, ROTC, um, these are cheaper paid teachers that equate on line two sixty-five to two point seven. Our ROTC instructors are higher-paid folks, so we pay them out of our state O-O-one position allotment. But because uh we get money uh from the Air Force and the Navy, uh, the state requires any of those positions that we pay out of state, uh, position allotment on the state side, we have to, we have to match that locally, so these are lower-paid teachers that we are matching the two-point-seven used in state O-O-one. Um, line two sixty-six, that is actual, uh, the differential, we are required to pay the ROTC instructors what their actual MIP or military pay is and um that is much higher than what the teacher scale is and so that uh comes from this line of one twenty-three. And the matching benefits follow. Um, lines two seventy through two eighty-two, that is program two, uh, that is program seven oh six, that is non-yellow bus expense, um, anytime our uh mechanics work on SRO cars or, um, I, well, I guess more specifically activity buses, if it, if it involves any type of transportation cost that it is not around a yellow bus, it's charged to seven oh six.
There's basically no change in that from what it's.
Not, not really, no.
What, what is, uh, two seventy-three?
Two seventy-three.
Land and building, contract R and M, land and building.
Let's look and see, we may not have, um, we may not have used that budget at all.
And contract R and M equipment.
Contractor repairs and maintenance for equipment.
Contractor, repair and maintenance of land. Why, why would we be repairing land?
I don't really know what that is, that comes straight from a general ledger and again, this, we stay to the one forty-eight and we'll do budget amendments throughout this, um, budget, does that make sense? No.
Yes, now just look into those two, I mean, if that's something we haven't paid, you can always take that out, move it somewhere else, since you might need it.
Yep, that's true.
I mean, I just don't, it it, it don't make no sense to me what it is.
Now, this is ROTC budget, right, and we asked for a.
No, 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 this is.
ROTC was right above that.
Yeah, this is transportation.
Oh, that's just a budget. Yeah, two, two seventy to two eighty-two is the in, uh, eligible transportation.
All right.
Is that if one of her non-yellow buses gets mailbox and they're put back in?
It could be, it could be a lot of things, it really could be. Um, honestly, that budget, we go very tight to that budget, I mean.
And we did hit a mailbox this year.
Yeah, I'm thinking you did knock over a truck and you have to.
What, what in your?
Get a mailbox or you're back, you're back into a doctor's office.
That was with the yellow.
That was.
That was the yellow bus.
That was yellow.
Yeah, we're there.
All right, two eighty-three.
Accidents will happen.
Okay, two eighty-three, that's cool.
Eighty-three, uh, that is coaching supplements and it shows the reinstatements.
Re-statement, uh, how much, one hundred percent?
Sir.
So we are reinstatement.
Can we please make sure that's in the paper and, you know, be bold, highlighted that we've reinstated, yeah, headline.
If you were.
County schools reinstates.
You reinstated up to eighty percent this year and so this brings us to a hundred percent.
Yes, sir, yes.
This is bringing us to, this is bringing us to a hundred percent, how did they get by with at least to eighty percent? Did they cut assistance?
Well, we, this year, I will be, um, when we get to the end of the year, I'm gonna be sending them a bill.
So we paid it this year and then we're gonna get reimbursed.
No, 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 we've only paid part of it and we, um, when that, I'll send them the bill for their overage, if you you'll recall, each high school got, you got one second, I, and I, cause I had to tell Mark Shepherd how much that was, how much they could spend after the fall season. And we can report out to the finance committee once, um, how much they're actually, but once they've used their budget, budgeted dollars, anything that goes over, we're gonna have to pay for it, I'm gonna send them an invoice.
Okay.
That.
So that's gonna be a hundred percent, hundred percent, hundred percent, we can cut teachers, but we can.
And you're seeing what's so ironic is I did not get a single call about those cutting of teachers.
It was his coaches.
I I didn't get as much compliance as closing the school as we did.
All the coaches, see, I got more calls on the assistant coaches than I did on.
We're refining forty-three thousand dollars, that does two increases.
Well, and I I agree that, I mean, the sports is a good thing, I mean, my daughter plays sports, I mean, she's she's just now in middle school and she's playing middle school sports, uh, it's just one of those, if they got by with it, how much do you think you're going to be getting bills, reimbursing for this school year, not two thousand seventeen, eighteen, two thousand sixteen, seventeen?
I'm gonna pull this, I'm trying, I'm trying to pull this up on my COOK spreadsheet that we paid for with line one thirty-five. One second.
Because that, that is one of the things, we've got a policy that states how many. Because that, that is one of the things, we've got a policy that states how many, how many assistant coaches, how many coaches that we pay.
For sport.
Football, seven assistants, one head, so on, so on. They know that we don't pay no more than that.
Well, the only time we vary is we've got some policy stuff where you have instead of twenty-five kids who are out of track, you have to. And we have one for safety purposes, which just happened to.
But you don't have to take all fifty kids.
Well, you don't, but you typically do retract because that's, that's how you compete in track, uh, and.
Take fifty kids and run over them or something?
You've got so many different events.
Track and, uh, track and swimming are one of those, uh, sports where
If you try out, you're pretty much on the team.
Place when the other teams, then you win. And we do have that safety cost, and, and I should, you know, it doesn't impact the cost that much, cause that just varies from year to year. The numbers will go up or they'll go down.
Well, I, I'm just, I guess it's going back to, it's going back to, we are doing assistant and coaches, doing coaches, co- coaching. We're going back to a hundred percent. But then, if you look back on children with special needs, we're not going back to a hundred percent. Correct?
That's correct. I will continue to have their director out of, um, O O two.
Okay, well, or career, technology, or education support, we're not going back to a hundred percent.
That's correct.
But we're going back to a hundred percent on coaches.
That's what this.
I love my sports, but it does not make no sense. I think we need to look into that.
Thank you. So you're saying not pick up sports a hundred percent?
I'm saying I'm only one person.
So do you want me to pull it out by, y'all can take a vote on it at the board meeting?
Say what he said again.
He's saying that basically C T E, we didn't fund back at a hundred percent.
E C.
Or E, in E C, we didn't fund back at a hundred percent, but we're funding coaches back at a hundred percent. And the coaches import is very important, yes, but we're also not funding, you know, the C T E program or E C uh, back.
We're not able to support them a hundred percent, but we.
We are the coaches, so we're putting, it seems.
Maybe those procedures might need to be adjusted a little bit next year.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I, I guess, let me refer it this.
In a years that we're.
Let, let, let me put it this way. Maybe not taking that money, going back straight to a hundred percent. Since we went to eighty percent, we gave in and went to eighty percent. Maybe not go all the way to a hundred percent and take it. Let's go to ninety percent, take ten percent and give it to career and technology.
See remediation, you didn't go a hundred percent either.
Well, but that's what I'm saying. So why, I guess what I'm asking, Angie, you brought this budget to us.
This is superintendent.
Okay, superintendent.
I can quote that Gerald Stadler.
Doctor Anne, why are we going back to a hundred percent on the?
I heard from you, I mean, not you in particular.
But you, we, you just heard that.
reinstated. I reinstated it. Now I can take it back out just as easily as I put it in.
In Dr. Garrett's defense, okay, uh, the only reason we're fighting over this kind of stuff is because the state, it has passed a class size law that they're not going to fund is gonna cost us nearly a half a billion bucks. And, uh, if that had not happened, we could have put it all back at a hundred percent and still done some kind of supplement. So it's, I agree with you, you know, uh, stuff's.
Just the appearance.
And, and we need to wait, the academic stuff to be athletic stuff, but, but really, given what we got as a curve ball, they've, they've done a pretty good job putting it together. I mean, they really have. If the state hadn't stuck us with the class size change, that they're not going to fund, we could have put it all back at a hundred percent and probably still had three hundred thousand to put on some supplements. But we, we just got a raw deal on the state's new class size law. When I do allotments, and I'm doing the math, and I, and I'm a kid for kindergarten, instead of dividing for one teacher for every twenty-four kids, I'm gonna be dividing by twenty-one. And they're not gonna give us any money to keep it at twenty-four.
But now, you know, if, if y'all vote and want me to take it back at ninety percent, I'll be, I'll be more of a.
Well, I guess what I'm looking at is, as.
I thought I heard what you were telling me to do.
Well, I've, I don't know what I ever said a hundred percent.
Well, I'm seeing that you did.
I know, but that's why, that's why, I guess what I'm trying to say is how many people does, I guess this is a question, I'll say, how many people does sports affect compared to career, technology, kids with special needs, uh.
Yeah, remediation.
Reading, yeah, middle school remediation. High school. How much, we're going to forty thousand. How much is high school? We backed a hundred percent on it?
Uh, it was a hundred seventy-two thousand last year.
I'm sort of like Steven on this one. It's, i- if.
Okay, well.
It's hard to, it's hard to, it's hard to, for me to. No, there's not, not a bigger sports fan in this room, I promise you. Nobody owes more to sports than I do. But it, it's, uh, when you, when you look at, you put a, you put coaches back at a hundred percent, but you don't do career and technology, you don't do, uh, exceptional children, you don't do uh, some of these other things, and we still are not gonna have funding for teacher assistance. It's hard to swallow. I don't know that I can defend that amongst my constituents.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I'm gonna put two things together here. We're talking about the calendar committee going to hourly and then cutting five instructional days.
Or more, yeah.
Or more. And we already, I mean, a- all the conversation from administration saying, okay, we don't wanna cut five cons- instructional days, but we're still not funding some of the educational part back up to a hundred percent, but we're funding supplements for coaches back up to a hundred percent. We're, we're here for the kids.
Right.
Correct?
That's right.
Coaches, coaches and everything, that's kids too, but we're here for the kids to learn first and foremost, correct?
I agree.
And to teach those kids. I'm just, I, I, I do not agree going back to a hundred percent. Now, I'm, I'm only one voice on this board, but I think that's something that you might, you, you, you bring a budget to us, and if it passes, it passes, if it fails, it fails. I mean, that's the thing of it, how we don't do this budget, is it gonna be voted line item, or is it gonna be vot- voted as a whole?
There's several here that you'll have to either, you know, you'll have to decide whether to, to ask that it be amended before we vote on it, or you can amend, or you can take a vote on each one. You can do it one of two ways.
Do you want this one to be line item now?
I do, and I see it, ch- just check into it a little more, see what else we can do.
Okay.
Maybe take some of that percentage back and put it to another.
I mean, like I said, we all know that sports is important, and the, the people knows that, and the fans know that. Yet, as an elected person, I'm here for the majority of the kids to make sure they're getting the best education. If we're taking, still not funding things at a hundred percent for the educational part of it, we're not doing our job.
I'd like to see, rather than voting on back, see if there's, is there a way, can you guys just take a look and level on it?
What we can do is go back and, and make it the same for all the items that we, you know, we brought it up to eighty percent last year. Okay, if you bring it up to ninety percent, how much would that cost?
And then?
Or we could just go ahead and, and work on that to where anything like you're saying, but a hundred percent. Cause you're not reinstating everything else at a hundred percent.
Make it on a more equal playing field with the other items that we.
Just sound more, listen more carefully to what you're telling me.
You done. Yeah, we're telling you the other things, Garrett.
Well, you've got, yeah, eight of us, nine of us up here. Everybody's got a opinion.
Opinion? You know what opinions are like, don't you?
Yeah, Steven.
We're okay, we're okay. Okay, so let's talk about the. Okay, now we're looking at the other curricular supplements.
Okay.
Where were you at?
Lines two eighty-seven through two ninety-two, that is cultural arts, um, coaching supplements, band directors and oral directors.
Okay, what's the difference in this coaching supplement and the one?
Okay, I was asked to look at that. Tim Wise came to see me one day this past week, and the supplement that has been used that we have for the band directors is the same one that's been used for several, I mean, since the beginning of time. He is comparing, he's got twelve years' experience, and he's comparing himself to someone who's, who's a wrestling coach. He's a twelve, you know, he, he does this twelve months out of the year, and he is far below even what we pay the cheerleaders and what we pay the head wrestling.
What line were we on?
Two eighty-seventh to two ninety-two.
So I'll bring that before finance next time.
Yeah, is there difference there? I mean, those eighty-seven, eighty-eight, is it one's coral, one's band, one's what? I mean.
It is, cause coral.
Which ones, I mean, they're together, but.
Band, I think, is the top.
Yeah.
Okay, then what's one, what's two eighty-eight then?
Coral, I believe.
Okay, coral, okay. So this, there's no, uh, there's no coaching supplements in two eighty-seven to two ninety-two, that's just coral and band.
And there's no scale.
Okay, that's, okay. Cause I, I heard you say coach supplement.
It's called a coaching, I don't know what, it's their supplement. They're, they're cultural arts supplement.
Okay, I, I just heard coaching, I'm like, well, why is this coaching in? I'm, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. So that, that, this, those line items are just for band and coral, okay?
It's confusing, cause the headers are below it rather than above.
Yeah. Yeah, it's below.
Exactly.
Yes, okay. So we're two ninety-three.
Okay, and that is high school remediation, um, partial reinstatement last year's, uh, fifteen, sixteen budget was one seventy-two.
Fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, shoot, these budgets. Okay, so we are forty, that's a hundred, hundred seventy-two. What percentage is that? That's not a hundred percent, that is eighty percent?
I'm gonna take it. You're at eighty-two point five percent of the fifteen, sixteen budget.
Correct, okay.
At the hundred forty-two thousand level?
Hundred forty-two thousand is eighty-two point, eighty-two and a half percent of one seventy-two.
Okay, now. All right, now remediation, is that like a after-school thing or during the school thing?
Both.
They, it's both. They do, uh, they work with kids who are behind in tea time and smart lunch, and they also have some tutors, and they'll buy.
Materials and supplies.
Software or technology for those kids to work on, to help them get caught up. They, they do a number of different things to, to try to get them caught up. Depends on the kid, it's such a.
And, uh, this is during summer school or after school's left, okay?
We could speed it that way.
But the only one that does that now is Sean at Bethel.
Okay.
And she uses her local to do, uh, after school's ended, she does her remediation and retesting.
Mr. Collins this year has hired a math tutor, a tutor student during the, uh, but you can also pay the teachers to tutor after three thirty. Start a math by hour, you know, fifty, fifty-two.
Okay, but that's up to the schools.
You just said something important. What did you say? Sean's the only one doing the.
She's the only one that rete- retesting and uses her remediation money to do that, and I mean, she's had significant gains too. Now, Dr. Bill, when he was at Ways of Mental, he used to do that.
Yeah, I did. I think if we re- if we required them to do that, we'd have to tell them in July and say, look, uh, here's your remediation money, and it's, you know, you got cut, you got this put back. You've got to set aside what you think it's going to cost you for summer school. The only problem is, is depending on what the calendar will mean, they, they would need to spend that in June to stay in the current fiscal year.
But it can be done.
It can be done, and we, we've done it before. Um, uh, Tom and I, Tom David and I, Greg Bailey.
You know, and just like Dr. Garrett said, though, it's caused a significant increase in itself, those kids.
Yes.
I don't know if that might not be a mandatory thing to tell them.
Can you?
Give that money to them, say, look, you better use this. I mean, have we got that?
Well, she's got her before and after, she's got before and after test results.
It's about, um, four, I'd say about four percent.
When the elementary started doing it, we had one school, one elementary that showed seven percent increase.
Well, if it's work.
That's what I like, but you have to count. Uh, there, there's certain losses with, but I mean, that's the potential gain.
That you can have those remediation days.
You keep having them now.
Yeah.
See, that's the whole point.
She's doing it.
And all the.
All right, two ninety-four.
Hey, rem- uh, travel reimbursement, it says out of county, it is also in county, and it's primarily in county, and that is for any central office clerical person, uh, this administrative assistant to superintendent, the associate superintendent, if they run and pick up stuff at Walmart, or run and have to set up for a meeting, that's, um, they will turn in a travel reimbursement, and that's where we pay that from. Two ninety-five, uh, travel reimbursement, band travel, uh, the reinstatement of twenty-four eighty brings that up to one hundred percent of the fifteen, sixteen year.
Again.
Again.
One hundred percent for band travel, okay?
That's you're looking at two thousand twenty.
Lots of happy band. Any questions? And I'm going to go on?
Second, go ahead, keep going.
Now, line two ninety-six, that is, um, supplies and materials for the C T E, um, ancillary direct, C T E director, ancillary supplies and materials, two ninety-seven, ancillary for arts, uh, two ninety-eight, ancillary for general, uh, two ninety-nine, P E supplies, uh, three hundred, um, curriculum supplies, three oh one, bloodborne pathogen supplies, three oh two, band supplies, three oh three, coral, um, coral supplies, ancillary three oh four for federal A I G supplies, elementary ancillary eight thousand, uh, three oh six, teacher of the year, um, seven thousand, that's for the, uh, teacher of the year luncheon. Um, three oh seven.
Thousand dollars? Where are we eating lunch at?
Well, it's for the luncheon, and it's for, um, they each receive, I think our teacher of the year receives five hundred, and then they get it. And they eat at the Laurel Ridge Country Club, I believe.
Laurel Ridge.
We have it at McDonald's next year.
Might cost more.
Um, three oh seven is ancillary for middle high, three oh eight is ancillary for A D, safe schools, two thousand dollars. Three oh nine, ancillary for H R director, five hundred dollars. Three ten, ancillary for culture arts, four thousand doll- dollars, three eleven, P E equipment, five hundred dollars. Um, three twelve, science equipment, um, allocated to the school, seven thousand. Band uniforms, that's what, um, we set aside each year for eight years. Um, and then one of the high schools will replace band uniforms. Three fourteen, large band instruments, uh, school allocation, uh, three fifteen, a piano, uh, and that is, may or may not be spent year to year. Somebody needs a fifteen hundred dollar piano, I guess about.
Yes, three oh two and three oh three, back to a hundred percent?
Three oh two and three oh three.
Got a piano donate, somebody needs it.
Takes four people to move it.
Is it?
I mean, the line item is.
And supplies and clothes supplies. I didn't have that written down, Mr. Corbattic, I'm sorry.
You're gonna ask a question on three oh nine for H R supplies. Is that including, like, you're going out to, uh, recruit teachers and that stuff too? Is, I mean, that, some of that's useful?
Most of the recruiting stuff that we. Most of the recruiting stuff that we do is title food money, recruitment, retention.
Okay.
The, the problem is, is you can't buy any sort of food, any sort of decoration, any sort of thing like that with federal money. So for example, the, the liaisons got together today and we're talking about doing something for mentors and their mentees. For an end of the year thing, and you can't use federal money for that. Cause you have a little bit of local HR money that you can spend on things like that for, uh.
Well, I just knew it seemed low if you're doing all that recruiting stuff, I'm saying that's not enough money to do that.
No, yeah, that, that's a very.
So it comes out of title too, okay. Okay, well, that's where I was, well, I was gonna say, if that's what you're getting, do that, that kind of job, that's not enough to do.
Well, I appreciate that.
To one hundred percent.
It'd seem like we'd be pretty poor if we're at a recruiting area looking for teachers and maybe a little half a table.
It's one hundred percent.
We, we think about those numbers, uh, like elementary is lower than middle and high because we know elementary can legally get. Some material support from title of them, so we just try to think about that, you know, as you, as you look at those numbers, but I. I don't take credit for that, that's been that way for a long time, those differences.
Okay.
Three sixteen?
Three sixteen, um, that is for seven IT tech, tech specialists, they're matching, uh, benefits follow. Three eleven is contracted services, and all of this from three sixteen to three forty-four is technology support, local, um, three twenty.
Things change and not look like.
Is the mobile communication cost, three twenty-four, is that cell phones?
It is, that reimburses eleven IT at thirty dollars per month.
All right, so you said through three forty-four. Director supervisors going up point five.
Shall I skip to three forty-five?
Yes.
Okay, three, line three forty-five is, um, workshop allowable travel for the HR department, forty-three hundred dollars of that goes to HR. Uh, three forty-six and three forty-seven, that is professional printing for our elementary, middle and high, it can be cume records, um.
Report follows.
Yeah, those types of things.
Humanization.
Yep.
Records.
Um, lines three forty-eight through three fifty-three pay for, uh, four TAs, uh, along with their benefits. Line three fifty-four is for Meridian Behavioral Services if needed. Uh, lines three fifty-five through three fifty-seven is the employee supplement. Lines three fifty-eight. Through three sixty-six is community and public relations for seventy-five hundred dollars that. Uh, we pay things like the Chamber of Commerce membership out of there, or if we do any type of.
Inserts.
Um, inserts or that type of thing, um. Lines three, uh, sixty-seven through three sixty-eight, three sixty-nine, uh, that is HR staff training and recognition, Mr. Rogers. And, um, line three seventy, that is our end of the year's employee celebration. Line, uh, three seventy-one, that's electric service at the Southwestern Daycare Building. Uh, lines three seventy-two through three seventy-five, that's for SRO cost. Line three seventy-six, uh, is for the Pisgah High School baseball field lease and property taxes, and we have thirty thousand unbudgeted. So where's all this money coming from? We're anticipating a county appropriation of fifteen million, five hundred thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars, that's based on a per pupil appropriation. Of two thousand sixty-four dollars and ninety-two cents for seven thousand five hundred and fifteen, uh, students. Seven thousand one hundred and thirty-eight of those students are from the Haywood County Schools, ten-day ATM. And three hundred and seventy-seven are brick and mortar charter, charters. Also, we are anticipating an appropriation for nineteen virtual charters at seven ninety. The increase from the, this year's county appropriation to what we're projecting for the seven, seventeen eighteen. County appropriation is an increase of four hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. You'll see also, we have appropriated fund balance to meet, uh, budget expense of two hundred sixty-three thousand, seven hundred fifty-five dollars. If you recall, board, at the end of June two thousand sixteen, our unassigned fund balance was two million, five hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred seventy-eight dollars. To date, we have.
One more, two million, what, five hundred?
Two, five twenty-seven, four seventy-eight.
What month was that, last month?
That was, that was at the end of, uh, two thousand sixteen. June twenty sixteen, our financial statements showed that we had, uh, two million, five hundred twenty-seven thousand. Uh, we have appropriated to date from fund balance, two hundred sixty-eight thousand, five hundred thirty-seven dollars, and if you'll recall. We may do another small appropriation, uh, based on CTE, we're waiting to see how her months of employment shake out, but from the charter reduction on the state side. So that would leave us, if we spend all of that and appropriate no more fund balance at the end of, uh, this year, we'll have just over two point two million. And of that, we are appro, we, the budget reflects a appropriated amount of two hundred sixty-three thousand.
All right, so you're looking at fifteen, okay, fifteen, five thirty-two. Projected county appropriation, fines and tortures, ABC revenue. The ABC revenues, are we, has it got back up to where it was?
We got eight more years on it.
Eight more years, is that how much they have on that building to pay for?
He said it would be a projection of ten years before that, before that building was paid off, and said, we don't get a cent until it's paid off.
Which building?
More people give us.
ABC, what happened, ABC, when they, when they moved, when they moved from. Next to the Jiffy Shop and built that building out next to Walmart, they took away from the school system. To borrow money, to pay that money to build that building.
We don't get any of it back until it's completely paid off.
Okay, fifty-nine indirect cost is. Fund balance, now the two sixty-three, seven fifty-five, what do you say?
Is that what? Big chunk of that is for those transportation, remember when Todd explained that to you? There, there's a possibility we'll get that back in the future.
But we're taking that out of fund balance to reach the number of sixteen million, two hundred and thirty-three.
Yes, sir.
Three, three, one point five eight.
Yes, sir, that's the recommendation.
All right. Are we ready to talk about, uh, I'm gonna throw a few pointers out there. Three hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifteen, we are reinstating. Three hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars back to the two thousand seventeen, eighteen budget. That was not in the budget, two thousand sixteen and seventeen. That, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifteen is the cuts that we made out of the two point four million dollars last year.
Correct.
Correct.
No, that's in the next column over.
So, here again, we're funding some programs back at a hundred percent, but some of them were not. With that three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. You said at the first of the meeting that if the county, or if the state did not pass that H.
House Bill thirteen.
House Bill thirteen, that it was gonna cost us.
Four hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to pay for.
The supplement.
For the, for the teacher.
For the teachers.
Increase, yes.
Now, has it, it, is it passed or the funding?
I've got a, Mr. Clampett, I spoke with him today, and he says that it is, it's going to pass, it's through the legislature right now, and it's through the, the senate, it's where, it's where it is.
So senate and senate.
The house passed it, the senate's.
It's going to pass with or without pay?
It's, it's with, excuse me, it's going to pass without pay.
Without.
And pisses all off.
I didn't say that.
But it's probably gonna have some changes.
Hopefully the senate.
Plus three.
All right.
Not still, it's gonna help us, it'll help us a little bit, but not. It needs to be funded.
That's what they're trying to do, is plus three, I understand.
It needs to be funded, though.
Yeah, they're, they're reducing the.
Sorry, Mr. Patrick. Go ahead.
Well, my point is, as being a sitting board member. We may need to look about. Not using or funding everything back at what we're getting ready to, three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. We've already talked about athletics, we're going to a hundred percent, other, we're not.
So on the average, possibly, to make it work, you could look at eighty percent.
I think eighty or eighty-five percent, cause there's another one there that you found at eighty-two percent. I think you might wanna look back at reinstating to a certain percentage across the board. And if that means that athletics is from a hundred percent down to eighty-five percent, and you're bringing. The high school back up to eighty-five, I think you might wanna look at that and then see if that number might change. Down, cause it should change going down.
What we could do is, you know, we still have one more work session, which will be next Thursday night. We could make the recommendations that, that you have made, we, we don't have to take a vote for anything, but these are merely recommendations, and we could present a modified. To you at that time, and then you would, you would vote on it.
Well, my thing is, is we cut two point four last year. And we're gonna reinstate three hundred and twenty-three, but we're gonna have to have four hundred and. Fifty to five hundred thousand. I don't know that we need to even. Fund it as much as we are and maybe. Leave things as is till next year, does that make sense?
It does, you're saying just do the same level that we did this past year at the eighty percent?
Keep it as close as we can until we see.
Correct.
Like, exceptional children.
Yeah, that was.
We didn't reinstate any CTE or.
The only thing we got, I got eighty percent was, was the.
So there are some things that you didn't.
And I, I mean, I'm not totally against, you know, like Stephen said, going to eighty, and like you said, that'll lower that three hundred and twenty. Three thousand some, maybe not put all that back in this year. Till we see how, how House Bill thirteen pans out.
And then you could always come back in July or August and do an amendment.
Do an amendment.
It's like if you do an amendment, if we didn't have to come up with ten teachers, you could do an amendment to increase that supplement if you wanted to.
And, and there again, that's another thing, we've got not only the four hundred, five hundred thousand for the teachers that were going. But we want to increase the supplement too, plus add all that back in. And.
And two, you've still got teacher assistance to look at.
We may have to pick up as well.
Yeah.
So by doing that, at least you leave yourself a little bit of wiggle room.
Breathe in the room right now, until we know what's gonna.
So your, is just to leave as.
May find may for done that.
So let me try to get this right, okay, so your direction or your recommendation for Thursday night would be just to drop back and not do anything?
No, that's, I'm only one.
I think to come to.
Even do like Stephen said, and raise everything up across the board to around eighty percent.
I just, I, I just don't think it's fair to do something at a hundred percent. I say that, and then we're funding something at a hundred percent, band travel at two thousand dollars, that's got it back up to a hundred percent. I mean, honestly, come on, let's get real, I mean, that's two thousand dollars. But I don't think it's fair to any body or any one program to do a hundred percent when that hundred percent is taken in. Forty, fifty, what was it total, fifty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And you're doing that hundred percent after we already did eighty percent. So my direction was, I would like to see just a certain percentage, even if it's eighty. Let's just say eighty-five percent, straight across the board. But now, Ms. Angie's saying that some of the programs, we're not even putting no money back in, correct?
Well, we did not, going into the sixteen seventeen year, we had certain programs, we had co, uh, coaches, band supplies, band travel, coral. That we, uh, reinstated up to eighty percent for this year, for sixteen seventeen. We did not reinstate, um, EC and CTE up to eighty percent going into this year, that's what I was saying.
All right, well.
Now, so, now like coaching supplements, you know, we've reinstated them a hundred percent, and like coral supplies, a hun, those items that were a hundred percent. Were reinstated to eighty percent this year.
Right, I think what they need, it needs to be in the middle, I, I just don't think you can really do it. It, it, it's not fair, I don't, I, I, I don't think it's fair to do something a hundred percent and everybody else is at seventy percent. Something that is going to help our kids be better in the future when it comes to test scores.
Okay.
I mean, all of it works together, and I, you can talk out of the two sides of your mouth, cause sports does the same thing, but, but does it do the same thing when it comes to bookwork?
Yeah, and since this is the superintendent's budget, I probably shouldn't be weighing in, but. But bear in mind that EC programs and CTE and middle school remediation have other funding sources. They have state and federal funding sources for coaching, and again, I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just saying, coaching supplements.
Coaching school.
Is only locally funded, EC receives, uh, state.
Federal.
State and federal, and so does CTE, state and federal.
Then why are we giving meaning?
Well, you have to, it's required.
Well, the, the EC, we've got to give them something.
You've got to give them something.
Yeah.
So now you're.
Last, last year, if I, if I understood right, last year when we dropped the funding for like exceptional children. It didn't really hurt the program funding, cause it came in from other monies.
Yeah.
It's coming in from other monies, yet, two thousand fifteen sixteen, we was funding it at a certain percent. We took two point four million dollars.
Cause those monies were coming.
We closed a, you know, we closed a school.
That's not changed.
Right.
We closed a school, cut all these programs, went back up before the end of the thing to eighty percent.
In certain areas.
Certain areas, we still closed the school, moved all these kids out of other words, and now we're going to a hundred percent? So, uh, the agreement sounds like you may want to look at a certain number across the board.
We can do that, now you had also asked about cell phones, do you want me to talk about?
Yes.
Can I ask a question first?
Mr. Rogers has a question.
Just one, if, to, to meet our budget. What if, uh, I mean, if any programs or benefits or things that we've been doing in the past, has any of those have been cut to meet our budget?
What do you mean?
Well, I don't know, any kind of programs that we're doing, like for, uh, we're giving things to helping, helping national board certified teachers, helping beginning teachers.
Out of title.
All this money, yeah, I didn't know if there's any local monies that's, uh, that's being, I mean, anything that we've using. To help our teachers and help our students, any local things that we've been using to cut, or, yeah, I just wanna just see if anything's. Any programs or any benefits have been changed.
Most of the local cuts, uh, that were made, Dr. Garrett, you know, from other people made. Early on when the, when the budget started, start, that started coming, I mean, um, local homebound.
So that was years ago.
Some things like that were things that we cut out of local, at this point, the, there's not much left in local to cut.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's what I mean, like you mentioned the homebound, yeah, that's kinda. Now that's picked up by federal and all that other stuff, yes. Okay, I'll just try and make sure there's nothing in there that.
You ready, Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Let me give Angie a project before you start on that.
Not that you don't have enough to do.
Not like you have, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight, the second line over. Uh, wow, not, uh, it's the tall, four, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. Of that, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight point five eight, what? You might want just to do a rough estimate, why, Dr. Ann, is the.
Benefit increase?
Benefit increases, cause we know that ten thousand dollars is, of that is going to be the new position that Ms. Rogers was wanting, and I think we've already discussed that now, I just, that would give me a better idea of. I just, that would give me a better idea of what really is money that is above and beyond.
Well, a hundred and fifty of that is transportation, so you can take a hundred and fifty thousand out of there.
Uh, who, who are we giving it to now?
Transportation, Mr. Trenton's gonna talk about that. The other is, and some of this is offset, uh, the two hundred and fifty-two thousand in increase in teachers. We've offset that by about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so you could probably take off. About a hundred and twenty-five thousand off of that, so what are we up to? Two hundred, two hundred and seventy?
Of two, about, roughly two hundred and seventy-five is benefits and the two percent that increased, correct?
Well, four thirty-two, three fifty-eight, minus the two seventy-five. Let's just make it three hundred thousand, hundred and thirty-two thousand. A hundred and fifty thousand.
A hundred and thirty-two thousand, so a hundred and fifty is transportation, we can take that.
You you could probably estimate a hundred and fifty's benefit and project us budget assum- assumptions of salary increases and benefit increase.
Can we take a hundred and?
Salary and benefit increase and Todd.
Away from what?
Transportation?
You'd have to take two buses off.
Todd's saying, come on, I've already explained this five hundred times.
In the final budget, would you like to see that broken down, how much of it is actually projected uh salary benefit increases?
And what the total cost of those ten new teachers would be, and then if we're gonna have to add assistance as well, that might be something we need to look at.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's important that you've got four hundred and thirty-two thousand, we know a hundred and fifty buses, but then what is physically? The money that pretty much is going to have to be paid, I guess you could really say, no matter what, it's it's got to be done. Because the increases you've got to pay.
Salary benefits, got it.
All right, okay, I'll drink, thank you.
Okay, for cell phone reimbursement, um, okay, like Angie had stated, central office administrators get thirty dollars a month. Now, remember from last year, that was cut twenty-five percent when we did the budget, cause we did twenty-five percent cuts on all that. Okay, you're talking about um, that's five thousand, eight hundred, you want me to give you that too? Five thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars.
And that was for?
That's for the central office administrators, and it includes Angie and Leanna, and we also included uh. Brooke, cause how many times does she text you and call you in a day? And then you've got principals, principals are paid the same amount, their total, it's five thousand, four hundred dollars, and that's for all fifteen principals. For assistant principals.
And that's at thirty dollars for that?
Yes, they're all thirty dollars.
And the top number was all thirty dollars?
How many does that include in central office?
Okay, central office.
Sixteen, maybe?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay.
Okay, then you've got principals, you've got fifteen of those, and those are twelve-month employees, so they get thirty dollars a month. And then assistant principals, remember, some of those are half and half, so their total, uh, they're eleven months, of course, so their total is three thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. So if you add up central office, principals, and assistant principals, that's fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. And then on top of that, if you take um, our social workers, that's another three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Maybe.
Just one?
No, it's all of them.
So how many you got?
Okay, I've got one, two, three, four, I got five.
So five at three hundred and sixty dollars?
Five at seventy-five dollars.
Seventy-five dollars a month? A year, year, okay, I'm sorry, I must, let me clean out something.
The three seventy-five's total for all of them, for a year.
And Lori McLeod, which is ESL, she's paid seventy-five dollars, which would be the same as the social workers.
Seven dollars and fifty cents.
I'm sorry, it's, it's, she's paid seven dollars and fifty cents a month for seventy-five dollars total, she's a ten-month employee. And then the other social worker, she is paid seven dollars and fifty cents a month, same thing for ten months, which is another seventy-five dollars. So if you take your social workers and your ESL, that's another five hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then you've got SROs that we're paying, and they're pa- they're, again, ten dollars for ten, excuse me, thirty dollars a month for ten months, that's another fifteen hundred. So if you take your uh social workers, your ESL people, and your SROs, that's another two thousand twenty-five. It's probably confusing the way I'm doing this.
Uh, well, it sorta is, but I mean, you're breaking it, you're breaking it down, it'd probably be just as, I mean, cause now. Here is where I'm seeing what Joe's talking about, you're paying some at seven fifty, you're paying some at thirty, so who's important and who's not?
Well, it's who has direct contact, and who's on call twenty-four hours a day too.
Well.
And then if you're looking at the technology people.
Social workers, twenty-four seven?
I mean, if something happens with a kid or something, and are they?
It doesn't have, I mean, I don't think, I don't think it happens a lot. I mean, it's not like you have a water line break and you've got to go and and do something about it. Yeah, we do call them, but I hope we don't do it as often as it do the others. Okay, you're talking about the technology department, and there's one, two, three, four, five, wait, one, two, three. Eleven people, and again, they're thirty dollars a month, and they're twelve doll- or, excuse me, twelve months, so that's another three thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. And then the last were those halftime people that I told you about, and then also we brought back an uh, an uh, a s- an a ladder, well, an itinerant. Assistant principals were applied, remember, cause we have a la- uh, the lady Erin is on maternity leave. So with those three people, that's another, you've got a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and sixty-five, and a hundred and fifty, so that's additional. And then if you take all of those and you do your bus drivers, your bus drivers are paid uh. Ten dollars a month, you've got sixty-seven bus drivers, so that would be six thousand, seven hundred. And then your EC drivers who um, who drive the EC buses, they're paid fifteen dollars a month. You have seven of those, so that's another one thousand, fifty dollars, so that's seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Then if you do maintenance on top of that, Christie, who is, who works directly with Joe, she gets the thirty dollars, so she's three hundred and sixty. And then if you do, uh, let's see, I think when you add all of these up from the different departments and stuff, it's thirty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars.
Thirty-one thousand, huh? Thirty-one what?
Thirty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars.
Joe's get, his other people gets seven fifty.
His other people get uh forty-five, they get ninety dollars a year, is that correct, Joe?
All right, so are you telling me that we're paying no teachers?
No teacher.
No, no teachers are getting any kind of cell phones?
Not from us. Or there might be a coach or something, I I can't verify.
But but no teachers are getting, so when one of my kids' teachers call me after work. They're not expecting thirty dollars for.
She calls your house, she's calling on her own time with.
She's calling on her own time because she is a teacher and she cares about what's going on in the class, correct? Okay. You're saying that we cut cell phones by twenty-five percent last year, so you're saying that we is paying forty dollars an hour?
We were paying.
Or forty dollars an hour, forty dollars.
Yeah, we were paying forty dollars.
No, no.
Forty-five.
Can I put my two cents worth in? One slice time, it's gonna be the last thing I say tonight. Ms. Francis is saying, yes, woo! I see that some people need to. Your principals and assistant principals and administration are the highest paid people in the school system. Joe's workers that physically has to come out at night to fix a water pump. Water break, something to keep the school system going, is only getting paid seven fifty.
Correct.
I think that department needs to be cut somehow, and everybody needs to be equal. You've got bus drivers that's getting paid ten dollars, that has the safety of my kid, that's going back and forth. Two hours, once in the morning, once in the evening, that's getting paid less. Than a social worker that may only see a kid every once in a while. So I think it may be terms there that we need to either cut. Cut it down and make everybody equal. I I I'm not saying to bring anybody, if anybody, Joe's department does need to come up. We've got that six thousand dollars in there, that's bringing them up to thirty dollars an hour. I don't agree that thirty dollars a, or thirty dollars an hour. Thirty dollars a month is where they need to be. I think, like I said, one person, one vote, cell phones need to be cut down. What number? I can throw out a number, twenty, twenty dollars across the board. Now, will that bring Joe up? I don't know. You as a superintendent.
On cell phones?
Total, just total number.
Oh, gosh.
You as a superintendent and Dr. Bill as a associate superintendent, I know as a board member, I could call either one of him's. But hopefully, I won't call you at one o'clock in the morning, but.
Do you do?
If I did, I I'm assured that you would call me back. Now, does, is that the position that you hold? Should we pay you e- should we pay you extra? For a cell phone usage?
See, I would answer it regardless.
Right, you would answer, okay.
But but I'm saying like with the administrators, they're on call, like our principals and assistant principals, I mean, I call them day and, and I'm sure y'all might call them.
And when they took that job, they knew that they was on call.
Correct.
Did you tell them, okay, you're on call, we're paying you twenty dollars?
I did not.
Okay, so they, they obviously knew that when they took their, their, that job, they didn't know whether they was gonna get pa- e- extra pay.
That is not in their contract.
And once again, we're only talking about twenty dollars a month, that's not a two hundred dollar phone bill. Next thing I'm gonna say is, if we're paying taxpayers' money for. One percent of that phone, is that phone number not public information now?
My telephone is public information. The bill is your, I'll talk to you too.
Hey, uh, my phone is my phone, and I, I just bought it, and it belongs to me, and. I have my Twitter account, my Facebook account, now, I'll be glad to show it to you if you wanna come look at who I called, but it's my phone. That supplement is uh, there, so if you wanna call me, I guess I feel I'll be getting the answer. I'm like, Dr. Garrett, I'm gonna answer. Uh, we did have a time in the school system where uh, phones were purchased for us, and they were handed to us, and we carried.
Well, the.
And we did check into that this past year.
Yeah, that that doesn't go really, in that instance, it's your phone.
Right, I don't know if just providing the supplement gives us necessarily.
Now, did you say you checked into that?
Yeah, Todd actually did a cost analysis on it, and to carry two phones, it was, it was about thirty dollars.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not talking about that, di- have you checked in that if you are paying, if you're being paid a supplement? That that phone.
I don't think.
Is a public, the paper can come and ask you for that phone.
Public record.
Is it public record?
I have had that conversation with things, actually, because we have had occasion during investigations. Where it would have been beneficial to take the employee's phone and look through it for evidence. And and they say absolutely not, even though you pay a supplement for, what they look at it is, is. Uh, you're paying the employee to be on call with that phone, you don't own the phone because you're supplementing it. Now, if you went and bought a phone from Verizon and handed it to Todd. And said, this is a school system phone, a school system phone number, and you use it for school system business. Then yes, we could take that phone anytime and go through it. We could track the calls, we could track the texts, that sort of thing.
Well, I'm I'm not, I'm not talking, I'm not talking about, uh, you, we're talking about two different things here, I'm not talking about buying everybody's cell phones and doing that. Uh, two things, I don't agree with the price that we're paying thirty dollars and, thirty dollars for a month. Second thing is, the second question I asked was, are we sure that we as budgeting in here? Supplement for your cell phone, whether it's ten dollars a month or one penny a month. Is that public record that they can come?
I remember we had.
Human resources, Jason is telling me, no, that he's checked into it. I'm asking that question to protect you, I'm not asking that question any other thing.
You remember, I don't know, I think it was on the board, it was a bus driver, and it was the school, that was when we did buy the phones for the bus drivers. And it was a phone, and there was a situation arose, and yes, you could not check that because that was not.
I think we just had the ethics, we just went to that um, ethics training, um, and that was discussed and and.
Yeah, brought that up at the.
I think another thing you have to look at this from a principal's perspective is, is not how many times. Dr. Garrett's gonna call the principal, but them being available anytime for a parent. And so what I, and again, you may say it's their responsibility as the principal, but it's, it's my responsibility to have a phone number, but it doesn't have to be a cell phone. So I can have a home phone number that I already pay for, and I can have an answering machine, and I'll call you back twelve hours from now. But your kid's having a fit the night before because something happened at school and you wanna talk to me. And when I was principal of Bethany Middle, I would give out my cell phone to all the parents at all the parent meetings and say. If there's a problem when you get home, call me, if I can solve it to where you can have a better night, and everybody go to sleep and be good the next day. By all means, call me. But if I'm out at my son's basketball game, you're not gonna get me, you know, unless I've got a cell phone that I'm carrying around. Uh, I do need to be accessible, but it doesn't have to be that quick, and I think that's what you're paying. You're basically paying a principal ninety-eight cents a day to be accessible instantaneously. And and think of how many problems get solved so much faster and don't fester because you have that ability. Now, if you don't pay me the the thirty dollars a month, and Dr. Garrett calls me, obviously, I'm gonna answer. Um, if five principals call me at home on the cell phone, it may lay there and buzz till the next morning, you know, it, I don't know. It it's, it's how much they're getting called at night and how much you wanna pay for that instant access to them.
Well, that's, yeah, that's true, but now, but now you said that you gave your cell phone out, how many other principals are giving their cell phones out?
Most of them do.
During the day or during the beginning of the year?
Yeah, most.
Okay, well, once again, thirty-one thousand, four hundred, we can go back to career and technology, we don't cut career and technology. And not get them back up to eighty percent.
Did you figure how many cell phones we got total? Eighty-nine?
Eighty-nine, and here, here again. And here again, who is the most?
There was sixty-seven bus drivers and how many ECs?
Seventy, seventy-four total.
Seventy-four total, okay.
Mr. Heinz, what you was talking about, principal fixing a problem right there. Who is the person that comes in contact with the parent more than anybody? The teacher. We're not providing anything for the teacher. The teacher sends emails. I've got two kids in school. I know one of the teachers, they send emails out every weekend. They take care of it, so.
You can say the same thing for a principal.
Just email me, you know, I'll get back to you. It's, you know.
You get, but but as a principal, as a principal.
You call the teacher though?
But you, kid, yeah, I can call the teacher, I know both, both teachers have answered my wife's cell phone.
Okay, but that's the thing is, is who do you want them to have, who do you want to have access to them and how fast? I mean, if you wanna pay every teacher in the system, you can't.
But that's what, that's what I'm saying, here we go back to what's fair and what's not, wh- what, what's not fair. I mean, that that, that's what you're going back to, but you're talking about nine hundred employees, correct? Twelve, is it twelve hundred now? But going back to it, I mean.
You're not asking the teacher to be on call to solve a problem, that's the thing, it's, it's uh.
If if I have a problem with my kid, I'm gonna call the teacher first, and or email the teacher, and t- t- teacher may get back.
It's probably an academic problem though, that that it won't hurt anything to wait till the next day and call up at school during planning period. If you're calling the principal or an administrator, it's probably pretty serious, you know? Or going off at school, or.
I'll look at it another way on the self-employed side, I guess I'll be a little, little greedy on this. There's, they can people call me twenty-four hours a day too, and I'll try to answer my phone the best I can, cause I know. There's, they, people call me twenty-four hours a day too and I'll try to answer my phone the best I can, cause I know that's my business, that's my job. Therefore, I don't give anybody supplement in my telephone bills. Uh, so then I can look at it on the other side too, yeah, I'm, I'm kind of with Mr. Kirkpatrick, we, we need to set a rate. Maybe we need to reduce that rate, but then make it equal across the board. And I do understand like Joe's employees, most people have got a cellphone nowadays, I'd say ninety-nine percent of the people.
And most of them are.
And most of them are going to use their cellphones.
And most of them are gonna keep them, whether you're paying the bill or paying them anything.
Yeah, they're gonna answer, they're gonna pay it where you're paying.
They're gonna answer.
It is, it is thirty, it's.
For a bus driver, do you need them on call twenty-four hours a day?
Yeah, on the time they're driving, they need to have that phone.
If you, if you, if you need a key maintenance employee, you may supplement him more, I don't think you can go across the board. It don't make sense to go across the board.
Well, it don't make sense to pay seventy, seven dollars fifty cents and thirty dollars.
No.
No, that's what I said, that.
It all depends on how much the availability is, is needed. You see what I'm saying, it depends on how much you want them available as to how much you supplement that. If you want, if, if.
You know, by board policy, mine's a four thirty.
Well, yeah, but you're human res- you're hu- you're, you're human resources, your job should be paid four thirty, should it?
Yeah, if there's a serious problem, yeah.
If for a serious problem, you should be able to decide who's gonna hire, who's gonna be hiring and who's not gonna be hired by four o'clock, right? Oh, do you have other responsibilities?
All right, we're, we're.
Okay, I've, I've seen my piece on the cellphones, I disagree with.
It sounds like we need possibly look at the cellphones at some point in time, maybe bring it to finance, uh, where finance can discuss it and, and look at the different rates, um, and the different categories on who's getting it, so. We'll move on to child. Yes. I, I would leave it as is in this budget. If, if need be, yeah.
Yeah, and this budget is taken in, you're moving your employees to, from seven fifteen or seven fifty to the thirty, correct?
Yes.
No, I mean, that's, it's in the budget.
I mean, it's in this budget, yeah, it's there.
Anything else before we move on to child nutrition?
I would caution one thing on the cellphones, I'm not sure if they're not public because they said in the ethics training, if we use our personal email, it's all public information. I don't know that a judge would not order your cellphone, you're not gonna be able to get your voices, a few texts or email and you're getting supplemented. I know in the mail that our phones, if we use them for mail, it's one hundred percent the mail's property. Anything on it.
Well, it sounds like there's something we need to let Pat smell.
I would at least, I would at least caution you just in case, not. Writing.
Did Pat not tell us the other night not to use her person, he cautioned us about using her personal emails?
I'm not saying they're wrong, but I'm just saying I wouldn't put anything.
But they can access your email.
But with, with the school, they said with the school email that is kept on, the school emails are, are kept, are kept separately on the website. So, as long as you're emailing through the school, using your school email address, that's kept.
But you can get your phone records of a terrorist.
That's true.
But still, it's still taxpayer funded, so it's subject to.
So, it sounds like, let me let Pat look into that.
I would just caution.
Okay, that'd be good, all right, let's move on to child nutrition. Miss, I think that covers it for the time being. There's more, there's more. Everybody brought their pajamas, cause we might be. That's right, all right, Miss Francis, I'm gonna turn it over to you now.
Thank you. Unlike Angie's budget, I don't have the number, line numbers down the side, I will learn, I will do that in the future, but I will just go by description, name and start at the top. First line is director supervisor and there is a increase of one thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars due to that anticipated two percent raise. Next line is office support and there is an increase of twenty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars due to the two percent increase, plus we'll be picking up Mary Ann's salary that used to be covered by their office that we're swapping out for the maintenance things that we discussed earlier. The next line is our substitutes and I would like to request an increase in our substitute pay. They are currently seven dollars and ninety cents and we have a really hard time finding folks to work for us. We might have ten on our list that will actually pick up their phones and come in when we need help. And I know when we had folks speak to you the other day, that was one of their concerns, is they can't ever find help when somebody's out. And I was hoping that maybe if we raised that to eight dollars and fifty cents an hour from seven ninety, that, that might help us find some more folks, cause that's more than you can get at Ingles or somewhere else, that we might be able to find some more help.
Yeah, I was gonna say nine dollars an hour, geez, mighty.
But that eight fifty would raise it to by one thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars on that line item.
If you can get them for that, that would be fine, yeah.
Cause they're very, very hard to come by.
Just out of curiosity, what is, um, your average child nutrition working?
Starting pay is eleven fourteen an hour and I would say, this past year with the bump, I think the next step for people that were employed prior to this year is eleven thirty-one. And then we have some folks that have been here for a long time and they may make around twelve dollars, if that. And then most of my managers are probably between twelve and thirteen dollars.
Or less than probably what a dollar fifty difference in the rest of it.
Yeah, and that's why it's also increasingly hard for us to hire folks that are willing, have folks that are willing to be managers because there's not enough of a pay difference between being a regular employee and a manager, other than that you work eight hours versus six maybe.
How, how difficult is it to hire somebody permanently?
Um, we usually have quite a few applicants apply when we, when we hire, cause honestly, like I said, just said, at eleven fourteen, well, that doesn't seem like much, when you compare that to Burger King, McDonald's, Ingles, hourly rates, it's, is quite a bit higher than, than those average service level employees.
Well, it'd be nice if you was paying substitutes and got them in that sort of field too.
Well, and that's, that's usually, that's what we do, we prefer to hire out of that substitute pool before we go outside. Um, we still have to, um, post the job and interview, but most of the time, we give preferential treatment to those folks that have been substitutes for us cause they've worked in our schools, we know what their work ethic is, we know how they get along with the staff at that school and we get an opportunity to try them out before we hire them.
A lot of the, the cafeteria staff said that they like the convenience of, you know, summers off and the hours and stuff, so it's, the schedules.
It's great for a, a, a parent that wants to be home when their kids are home, you know, um.
Let's come back to this one.
Okay, with the increase?
It's like, I'm like Jimmy, I don't know if that's.
Enough?
Not much.
Let's see what the bottom line is.
The next line is our driver's salary costs, there's no change in that line. Um, next, we have our food service employees and even with the anticipated increase, we've cut, um, hours what, from last year to this year, so we're gonna be able to stay at the same amount on that. Um, managers will raise, uh, four thousand dollars with the anticipated two percent increase. Um, our overtime, we're gonna hold steady. Workshops will hold steady at seven thousand five hundred dollars.
How much of that overtime do you not be in the front of substitute?
Probably a lot of it, and then some of it is our combination employees that also drive buses. And then if we have, um. Somebody out and we can't find subs, then those folks work extended hours to make up the difference. So there's several different reasons that that happens. Uh, repairs and maintenance equipment, that is now going to Joe's budget to offset picking up Mary Ann. Our next line is travel and that will remain fourteen thousand dollars and that includes mileage for managers coming to our office, coming to meetings, going to the bank, um, and then any travel outside of the county that I need to do for meetings as well. Um, telephones, there's an increase of one thousand two hundred dollars, it's office phones, not cellphones. Um, and that's due to not getting the same E- E- E-rate rebate that we've gotten in the past, so that's why that number has increased.
How about you on travel, how much of this have, I mean, have you been using, is that pretty tight? Fourteen thousand's been pretty tight?
Nobody's paying my travel anymore. Um, as of the end of January, we had spent six thousand two hundred and forty dollars, so that's pretty much on the money for that travel budget.
Be pretty close.
Yeah, sir. I'm sorry, let me catch back up here.
It's very postage.
Postage, eight hundred dollars and that'll remain the same, that covers sending out, um, letters for, uh, people that submit free introduced applications. We have to send letters to them and things like that.
Back up to the travel just one, I heard you say that that's for managers coming in to the office?
Once a month, we have, um, all their paperwork is due, we use the courier week throughout the week, but then once a month, they bring all their paperwork down to us and then it's for, they do deposits every day at the bank, so their travel.
We pay principals to come to meetings once a month, the mileage?
I guess it's stop and, or extra pay for extra work.
Okay, okay. All right.
All right, here we go, mobile communication, uh, is at sixteen hundred dollars and that includes, unlike the rest of these, since I've been here and prior to, our phones have always, were provided to us. So, um, that covers ca- phones for Candy and I, so you all may wanna look at making a change to how we do that.
That's for two phones.
It's for two phones.
Sixteen hundred dollars?
It's a, it's a hundred and four dollars a month. And then there's some extra in there for when phones have to be replaced, when they break or whatever.
Who do you have, Verizon?
And that's what, that's a government rate, government contract.
And to use that phone for personally use?
Yes, sir.
Better find that about it. Cause that's.
Uh, can you or, uh, we do.
See, that's a different situation. That's there because we own that phone. So that's a different, probably different situation right there.
So we may need to look at changing that on our budget to go into the same as everybody else. Um, membership dues and fees will remain at six hundred dollars based for our professional association. Uh, vehicle liability insurance will stay at one thousand five hundred, that covers our truck and van. Um, supplies. We are a little bit over budget this year, so we wanna increase that by five thousand five hundred dollars. That covers any type of office supplies, it covers our leases on our copiers and printers and it includes small equipment for the kitchens.
I mean, ask a question, I mean, this is probably not a big deal, but the vehicle I built the insurance, now if the truck then is gonna be under the maintenance department, would that insurance have to change to be under a different category?
I was told it would stay with me.
I didn't know if it would have to be under a separate.
I tried that too, trust me.
Thank you, sorry about that. You're being generous, Joe.
Take it all, Joe, take it all.
You're being generous, Allison, thanks for paying that in.
Uh, repair parts, that line, I'm sorry, I skipped one, uh, computer software and supplies, that, that is our point of sale and all of our financial software that goes with our program, that's our yearly fees that we have to pay for that. Repair parts, that is going over to maintenance as part of the swap that we did. That forty thousand is a little high, we don't, we haven't hit that, we're, I think we're only at like twelve thousand this year, so that, that number is high. So that will be removed. Sorry, I can't get my page to go down. Gas, diesel fuel for the truck, we have it two thousand dollars, tires and tubes, six hundred dollars. Um, food purchases will remain the same at one million four hundred thousand. Uh, food processing supplies, this is chemicals to wash the dishes, clean the kitchen, any type of paper product, any fork, styrofoam, you name it, anything that's not a food related purchase. Non-capitalized equipment, we don't have any, anything in for that, for that one. Uh, non-capitalized computer equipment, uh, we need to replace, we've got several computers for our point of sale system that are out of date that need to be replaced, we replaced a, I think eighteen of them like, two years ago when we need to replace some more of them, so there's, that's an increase of nine thousand dollars. And I've kept equipment at fifty thousand dollars. Our depreciation, based on some newer things that we've added to our, um, that we purchased in the last couple of years, we had three hot water heaters last year that increased the amount of our depreciation, cause we had the new items added to the list. Our social security costs will go up because of the mandated increase. Uh, I, we hope that retirement is going to stay about the same because of the decrease in benefits that we're providing as people retire, that our six-hour positions, if we can cut that to get it under six, we have been, so that number has gone down for us. Um, medical insurance will also go down a little bit for the same reason, less benefited positions. Workman's comp will remain the same. Unemployment insurance, insurance will remain the same, uh, we're removing the bonus pay line because we don't have any inclination that that's gonna be there this year. Longevity payoff will remain the same.
Are we using the bonus pay?
Uh, when the state mandated the bonus pay last year, that's what that was, we put it in the budget. We haven't had any, anything that has told us that that's gonna happen for this next year. Um. Annual leave payoff, we decreased it by a thousand dollars, cause we don't have quite as many, uh, folks close to retirement that we've had in the past, um, short-term disability will remain at five thousand dollars. And our total expenditures of three million nine hundred seventy-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars, which is a total, uh, decreased our expenditures by fifteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars compared to last year. For our revenues, our sales and tax revenue will remain the same. Our USDA grants will increase by, we hope it'll increase by twenty-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Part of this increase is due to our two schools that are on the community eligibility provision. We're feeding more kids because of that program, since it's free for all students. I hope to add some more schools next year, we pull those numbers April first. Um, and based on last year's information, this other, the next two schools on the list that are the closest are Jonathan Valley and Meadowbrook. So when we pull that data April first, we'll see if we can add some more, so far, that's been a very successful program for us, it has been, helped us make some money. USDA grants, commodity food used has increased by nine thousand dollars. This is due to the increase in meals as well, we get twenty-nine cents per lunch served, so that number has increased due to the number of meals increasing.
Uh, is that also considering the increase in the cost of the meals, is that what you're talking about for next year?
That's a, those, that is, um, the commodity foods that we get, we don't actually get the money, we get the money, but we don't get the, it doesn't, we don't get it in cash, we get it in food. So I turn, they tell me I have two hundred and.
You get the credits.
Yeah, they tell me I have this much money and then I, they, I've got a shopping list of canned green beans, frozen carrots, turkey, you name it. And I have to go through and order things off that list with that money that they provide us. Uh, sales breakfast full pay, I have, uh, decreased that by two thousand five hundred dollars due to CEP cause we've had a shift in categories, there are less kids in that paid category now, since they're getting the meals for free. Sales breakfast reduced, um, we get money from the state on that, so the parents aren't asked to pay that thirty cents, so there's nothing in that line. Sales breakfast for adults will remain the same, we don't have a lot of participation at breakfast from adults. Sales lunch full pay will go down by thirty thousand for the same reason, a shift in categories due to the community eligibility provision. Same for the reduced, go down by a thousand. Sales lunch adults, uh, we've actually seen an increase compared to last year in the number of adults eating with us, so we're projecting a ten thousand dollar increase based on what we've seen so far this year. Uh, supplemental sales, um, a decrease in thirty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars and this is just based on what we've seen of sales so far this year. And part of that was the adult, the lunch, adult lunch meals used to be in that same supplemental sales line item. And we separated that out, so it's really more of a twenty-three thousand dollar difference than thirty-three. And we separated that out, so it's really more of a twenty-three thousand dollar difference than thirty-three. We don't do any catered breakfast, catered lunch, we're hoping for an increase of ten thousand dollars. This is where we cater to the daycare at the community college. And their class size has increased uh, this year and they look at adding an additional class next year. So that helps us out a lot at the college location. We do close to a hundred meals a day there for their students out of that community college kitchen. Uh, state reimbursement for breakfast, um, eight thousand dollars. And this is again is due, uh, I'm sorry, a decrease in four thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars due to the shift in categories from reduced to free from CEP. Interest earned on investments, increase of two hundred and fifty dollars, cause we might actually have a little bit of cash in there now to get interest on. Um, other operating revenues, we've left the same, the disposition of fixed assets, we've left the same. And with uh, this budget, we're hoping that we do not have to touch any sort of your fund balance, since we don't have one. Are there any questions?
I got, it's not a question, it's just I don't, I don't understand. If I went to Clyde Elementary now, and my child was there, I don't have to pay for their lunch anymore, cause the whole school's on free, and I can, I can afford to pay for it. I don't understand how our system allows that, I mean, it just don't make sense to me. I'm just gonna figure it for you. It's the federal government, I don't like that idea.
If more than forty percent of the students at Clyde are el- are on free and reduced lunch based on food stamps or um, homeless, foster, runaway, then they could be considered for the program. But you have to get to sixty percent to where it's kind of a break even, where we wouldn't really lose money by going up, doing the program. Um, it's not based on the applications that are filled out by parents that don't receive food stamps. So it's strictly on categorically eligible kids that come from a different program.
Like that, and I'm thinking, well, I could afford to pay for my child's meal, so why should I not still pay for it?
Well, and honestly, i- it's always been.
You're getting more money from the federal government than me paying that.
Yes.
Just messed up.
Well, I just wish you could do it across the board for all schools. And you know, transportation is provided, textbooks are provided, they don't have to pay for those things. One day, I hope to see where lunches, breakfast and lunch are provided to everybody as part of the school day and they're not have to be a cost to parents. That would make our lives a whole lot easier. Cut down on a whole lot of paperwork, free and reduced applications, all of that. And those schools don't even have to turn in free and reduced applications anymore that are on the CEP program. We aren't having to chase down parents for charges that aren't paid. I mean, it's just, I know it doesn't make, I know it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but it does simplify them and it's helping us.
There's starving to death and they can't feed them, so.
What, what are the um, the, I know it's, it's broken down per school, but the amount, what's the sort of average amount of money that's not paid um, or owed to the school that the school either has to eat or?
It really depends on how much the principal goes after it. Um, at the end of the year, some schools might have to pay a couple hundred dollars.
So it's not.
Other schools don't pay a dime, because they've just.
So you're, for, the most a school would have to come up with is say five hundred dollars.
I think that's.
So that's not, so we're not really losing that much then at the school for non-pay or kids not paying.
They're not losing anything, because they can't charge in the cafeteria, they either have to go and get the money or.
Well, that, not in elementary schools though, but, but we're not, the, our program is not allowed to cover bad debt. So the principal, it's up to the, it comes out of the school funds.
Exactly, so you, so, okay.
But throughout the years, it's gotten a lot better.
It has, it has gotten better.
And then we always have the occasional letter that Mr. Smanders writes to you.
And, and I'm gonna throw this out, and I know this doesn't have anything to do with childhood, well, in some ways it does, but um, and I know Clyde's, you started this um, program. And I guess since they're on the, the, you know.
Yeah.
CEP.
CEP program now, that it, it's not gonna be as effective, but they started that all pro dads program, where the, the dads come and eat breakfast with them. And I know I've helped start it at Junealuska, and we've got probably seventy parents uh, coming every month and eating breakfast at schools. And I'm sure that's gonna help boost this breakfast revenue up. So, you know, if we could start some of these programs at some, some of the other elementary schools, that may also help, you know, boost some of that breakfast revenue at least.
Are you paying, are, are you paying when you go for your breakfast?
Yes. Yeah.
Uh, well, I was, some, I think at um, Jonathan Valley, they, the PTA may pay for donuts and things and the parents don't pay, so that's why I was asking.
The, the parents at Junealuska, so far at Junealuska, we're paying for the breakfast.
I was just cheering, yeah.
Anybody have any questions on that?
You wanted us to come back and look at that.
Yeah, I was just trying to see what the bottom line was and if, if Allison feels like, what'd you say, eighty-five?
Uh, my original, originally was gonna ask for nine, but I figured I was pushing my luck, so I dropped it to eight fifty. But um, I think we can support the nine dollars.
Yeah, I was looking at nine, the reason I was thinking about it, but then again, you got to look at it, what's your regular cafeteria workers are making?
Though, how are they gonna feel if you're bringing somebody in at nine and they've been there fifteen years making eleven?
Making eleven fifty years.
Yeah.
But the new people coming in are making the same as they reckon, when we hire on a permanent person.
You hire new people.
But they, they, they need the help and they know it's a need. And I think if we could raise that and actually have people on, on a list that they could, that would show up, I think they would be appreciative of that, not, uh, yeah.
So can you visit?
Well, according to your budget, you know, I'm not gonna sit here and argue over a few dollars.
Well, my biggest con- my biggest concern is, do you feel like you're gonna come out with fifteen thousand dollars to the plus? In this budget?
It's a pe- it depends what happens next year.
I mean.
With the calendar, to be honest with you, this budget doesn't mean a whole lot if our calendar changes.
How's um, how are you looking right now?
Um, I just pulled up our um, income statement. And as of today, we have a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in cash. That doesn't mean that it's gonna be there tomorrow. Um, I know when Dr. Garrett gave the report at the last board meeting, we were at two twenty-nine, but then payroll has to come out of that and invoices has to come out of that. So that number is never a constant, it fluctuates based on our, our bills. So it just depends, you know, last year. You can't, no, and we're always a month behind, so it's really.
Reimbursement as well, so.
I guess, I guess my biggest thing is, is what, two years ago, we had to take money out of fund balance, balance your budget. And I mean, I'm all for giving them more money, as long as the revenue's there to cut.
Last year, we.
Give it and then have to take it away in another year because we lost money.
Well, and I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but if that calendar changes, you'll be giving me money. So just prepare yourself for that.
How do y'all feel? Meeting the mill at eight seventy-five?
I mean, do you want it to increase or just leave it as is?
I mean, she's got, what, seven ninety built in? Or is, no, they're at seven, you wanna go, you wanna go to eight fifty?
Well, and, and I have not included the increase for the, the five cent increase, because I haven't had that passed by you yet. And that'll uh, increase our revenue by eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
That's for the price increase of the meals, yes.
So there will be some extra money that's not built into the budget right this minute.
My thoughts, I'd look at it at nine, nine dollars an hour, just to see. How much more would that raise you? Eighteen ninety-eight?
Also a little bit more, just another probably two thousand dollars more, thirty-eight hundred.
Look between eight fifty and nine dollars wherever you feel comfortable coming in, in the, in the, in the black.
That's fair, like Claire said, meet in the mill. You're between eight fifty and nine, eight seventy-five, whatever's, if you think you can get your people in there, I mean, the subs will be willing to come to work and feel comfortable about coming to work, cause yeah, you can't drive to work for seven dollars and ninety cents an hour and work two hours.
Especially when we're only needing you to come in for three hours.
Fifteen dollars or, yeah, three hours. Twenty-one dollars, yeah, that's not worth the time to drive to work.
That was uh, seven ninety to eight fifty.
That was sixty cents, so that.
Sixty cents, so you're talking about sixty cents, you're talking about doubling that at nine, not even doubling it. So you're talking about another couple of thousand dollars if you get a nine, less than that.
Less than that, yeah.
It'd bring it to, uh, raise it by, no, well, but I don't know if I did my math right, let me try that again. It'd raise it to twenty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Twenty-eight thousand, or?
So three thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars versus the.
To do the nine?
To do the nine, yeah.
Thirty-five. Sounds to me like it's your call.
Why don't we just have her look at it and see what she can afford?
That's most, yeah.
Bring that to the next board meeting for vote, or how's that, next works, you can, you can vote at work session?
We don't vote.
So it probably has to come through finance, I guess.
Would, but what she can do is show you if there's any corrections.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Francis. Do you have anything else you'd like to, over, okay. Next on the agenda, yes, Mr. Rogers?
Um, right now, it is two forty-five and two, two forty-five for s- pre K through five and two seventy for six through twelve. We are required by the federal government to raise it every year until we reach the same amount of reimbursement that they're giving us for a free meal. Um, because we have, and. It is two, three eighteen. Um, and we're supposed to do ten cents a year, but because we have those two different prices for element, there's a twenty-five cent price. We can average it and it comes out to a nickel instead of the ten cents. But every year when we increase it, we lose a few, a few of those paying students every time that meal, that price goes up. So I, we can do ten cents versus five, but it's just, you know, up to.
Anything else?
I think the charter kids are paying three fifty a meal. Last time I heard it, yeah, cause I saw somebody, I.
They're getting that catered.
It was catered from Candy's for a while, Kanini's or.
Kanini's.
Kanini's. Yeah, I don't know where to get it at now, but.
Okay, next on the agenda is Mr. Cannon for capital outlay and long range plans.
Alright, um, before you, you should have one labeled proposed capital or proposed expenditures capital seventeen eighteen. Um, under that, I did include the money that we've got set to set out of our lottery for this year for eight hundred thousand for the heat for Tuscola and Fisk's gyms. Um, we are waiting on bids on that, we're getting ready to put that out to bid, I've got the plan. So we will be putting that out hopefully by the end of March, so we will know where that number's gonna come in at. Um, following, I have kinda kept it very brief as to descriptions, but roof repair, I've set aside fifty thousand dollars, or I'm going to request fifty thousand dollars from the commissioners um, for roof repair, um, safety, fire alarm, security, access control. Um, just anything to do with safety for the schools, a fifty thousand dollar expense. Flooring, replacing carpet, tile, et cetera, fifty thousand. Doors and windows, replacing doors and windows, fifty thousand. Electric, um, upgrading electrical equipment, lights, converting to LED miscellaneous, I've set aside fifty thousand in that line item. Plumbing, same thing, fifty thousand. HVAC, upgrading boilers and air conditioning, fifty thousand. Furniture, um, thirty-five thousand, whether it be desks or whatever. Um, custodial equipment, thirty thousand, that can include vacuum cleaners, buffers, scrubbers, lawn mowers, anything the custodial staff's gonna need to maintain the facilities. Um, maintenance equipment, um, thirty thousand, same thing, lawn mowers, excavators, whatever. We need to maintain the facilities as far as repairs and we can move those numbers back and forth. Um, parking lot repairs, um, fifty thousand. We are getting our roofs in pretty good shape. I've got kind of our long range plan or a five-year plan tied to our facility needs plan. Um, we have got a lot of parking lots that are getting bad, that we need to start putting money towards and making repairs. So I've got fifty thousand set aside for that. Um, below, you will see a building expense. I get principals all the time wanting wild things. Um, I tried to come up with a way where we could allocate money for each school and they can use it for carpet, they can use it for desks, they can use it for blinds, tinting windows, whatever benefits their school. They can still request it and we approve that expenditure for them. But that kinda gives them the ability to prioritize their, their wants versus their needs and have it tied to that school with some restrictions. So they've got the ability to make some upgrades or improvements.
Haywood Early College, you know?
Is that building maintained by the college?
Any questions on that?
Uh, yeah, uh, if uh, we have to do the ten more teachers and she said we might need furniture and stuff, will, will that be enough to cover the furniture if we have to do more classrooms or whatever?
We have quite a bit of furniture sitting in numerous places, whether it be spare or in storage. I'm sure we could scrounge up enough desks and things to make classrooms if we had to, without having to spend that. But if we had to buy all new, no, that would not touch it.
There's a bunch of.
We have a lot of furniture sitting around. Now, from what I have experienced, when it's sitting around, we've got most of the good out of it. So it's not like we've got brand-new tables and chairs sitting around somewhere just collecting dust. It's very, very used.
Well, yeah.
One of the things that will happen there too is the maximum class size cafeteria right now is three floors. And uh, they're lower than that, so we will legitimately be able to take three desks on this room, and three desks on this room. Three desks on this room. And uh, because I, we, we don't anticipate more students in K three than we typically had. And we have the desks and chairs there for the ones that we have now, so they may not all match. But the, the bigger problem will be just having the teachers and hopefully assisting.
Well, yeah, and if the state don't fund this, we gotta use it.
Supplemental equipment that you couldn't take out of one room because you only had one of them. And we might need another teacher's desk or something, but. The furniture won't be the biggest problem with the, with the, with that one. Biggest problem will be teachers.
Alright, next, I've got tile nutrition. I have included thirty-five thousand dollars to cover cafeteria equipment to whatever surprises we may have, whether it's dishwashers or whatever. Um, I've also got transportation lot item we created last year for the purchase of an activity bus and security cameras. Um, maintaining that, it's the same. That would put us with a proposed capital request of seven hundred thousand. Um, maintaining that it's the same. That would put us with a proposed capital request of seven hundred thousand dollars. Any questions? Okay, you should have a projected capital needs recurring every year for up to five years. Um, that is very close. Um, it's very hard to anticipate what's gonna break and when. Um, but you can see that roof repairs, I've got those increasing over the next, well, next year. And then maintaining for the seventeen or for the eighteen, nineteen through twenty one, twenty two. Um, right now, we have six roofs that are at the twenty year age. That right now on paper is when they needed to be replaced, but they're not leaking. So I'm trying to get more out of those. So it depends on how bad they get as to when we need to spend that money on those.
I was trying to say is fifty thousand or seventy five thousand enough, cause you replace one roof and you're looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars.
It depends on the roof and the condition of it. I've got roofs that we anticipating uh, replacement at fifteen thousand to a hundred and sixty thousand, so.
I was starting to say some of them can be pretty expensive.
It gets expensive quick, but it's one of those things, fifty thousand will not cover it. But if it comes to that, we will pull from some of these other places boiler expenses or whatever. And bring that line item back up to where it will meet our needs. So these are not fixed numbers. Does that make sense? It gives us a, a goal to work for, but it's not rolling stone. Okay, any questions?
I think you've done a great job of what you're doing with that, with that little of a budget to be working with.
Oh, and I did attach our facility needs. This is our zero to five and five to ten year or six to ten year plan, so. So for information. Any questions on that?
If you, uh, you're trying to stretch the dollar on, on the play, maybe this year. You gonna hang on to that money or you spending it down there?
It depends on the year. Um, some years we were gonna use it and then some years we won't. It just depends on what kinda year we've got. I'm not, with capital Angie, we can't just set it here and carry it over.
You spend it or lose it. They give it, whatever the commissioners approve, we actually spend and get reimbursed.
Well, my thing was is, you know, if you're not gonna spend fifty thousand this year. I'll live to the next year if you need a two hundred thousand dollar roof. Bet you can't.
If you could, yeah.
That's something you might be able to ask the commissioners to do.
They wanted to, uh, fund it like they do counter appropriation. They funded, you know, funded up not. Probably what we need to do.
I mean, I, I mean, I'm all for saving, not putting a roof on this year if.
Buy a couple of years, yeah.
If you can get by another year or two, but if you can't use that money somewhere else.
If you have to use it, do you hold it?
What's an example of like the most roof when it's needed? Like I'm thinking about Pisgus and they've got separate buildings. So would fifty thousand cover one of those buildings or would it take?
It depends on ru, for the roofs that I have on paper right now that needs repaired. Bethel Meadows, their auxiliary gym, um, I don't know if everybody's familiar with it or not, fairly small gym. Um, we're looking at somewhere between fifty and thirty thousand dollars to replace that roof. It's a shingled roof now. Um, uh, Bethel Meadows Vocational Building, which is an EPDM, a rubber roof. Um, we're estimating a hundred and ten thousand for it. So it really depends on the type of roof that is there, whether it's flat or slope and the material it's constructed out of.
Well, the only thing I would caution is if we do have six, we might, we don't wanna wait till we got six leaking.
Right.
Then we got a catastrophe, uh, and then we losing, if we had it leaking this room, we're losing everything in here, so. That's something I, I'm didn't, I don't, I'm not know.
One, one a year and just go ahead and.
Maybe get, you know.
And that is something we can do. I mean, this is only a suggestion. I mean, we can replace them whether they need it or not. I personally would try to spend the money somewhere else where it's more needed and then come back to this, but it, it's up to the board.
That's where we have to, you know, trust you to make the right decision and hopefully, like Ronnie said, it don't come down to you. Uh, oops, we got two roofs leaking. It's gotta be done this year and you're looking at two million dollars and where's that going?
Uh, for an example.
A couple hundred thousand.
I have a, I have a roof right now that is less than five years old. Every time it comes a hard wind, it blows shingles off. So there's no guarantee that just because it's a new roof that we're not gonna have issues out of it. So I'm working on how to solve that problem the best way to benefit us, but just because it's not, just because it's twenty years old doesn't mean that it's the most important problem we have right now. I guess would be the best way to put that. So I can spend that money on roofs and we can keep them way ahead of schedule, but I would try to use it in other areas if possible.
Alright, I do have one other question here, um, and just for clarification purposes. You've got thirty five thousand dollars on your proposed expenditures for cafeteria equipment. And Ms. Francis has fifty thousand dollars on her budget for equipment. Is, are we duplicating there or are we talking about totally different equipment if?
I try not to spend my fifty thousand. It's there if I have to. I usually don't spend much of that at all. It's just kinda there in case something, before he started looking for money, I didn't have, it was there if, if I just had to have something that just.
So basically, but, but both of those line items would be covering primarily the same equipment in our cafeteria.
Just one dish machine costs thirty one thousand dollars, so, I mean, that sucks up the whole.
I mean, who, who ultimately would be, would that come under, you know, whose budget would come under? Would it be under child nutrition or is that gonna be in maintenance?
First dishwasher that goes down, who pays?
Yeah.
Well, if he can't keep the capital outlet money that he's got and has to use it, then I would assume it would come out of his. Because if I don't use mine, I've got our, I, it just, I, that's that much less I spend.
And now mine, we can move somewhere else if we don't have to have it. Does that make sense? We've got a couple of dishwashers now that are a couple of years old that we can.
Three years old.
Replace that are, that are needed. But it's one of those things where if we, if something, another chiller goes down and we've got to find a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And we've not spent that on child nutrition, we can pull that money and send it to a cha, uh, to a chiller.
Chiller, okay.
Um, so there's a little bit of flexibility there. It's gonna be up to the board whether we're allowed to do that or not. But we have that flexibility.
Okay.
He hers has budgeted, but it's not really there. She's already losing, but she hasn't used it either. It's just a budget item. It's just a number that's there.
Okay. Any other questions? Alright, let's move on to Mr. Tranther.
Transportation. Thank you, sir. Members of the board, I hope that Dr. Garrett intended to save the best for last and that's why she chose to put me at the end of the agenda.
She just wanted to make you sit here and endure this.
Maybe, and maybe it's just getting late and we're all just getting funny. Um, when we look at transportation budget, I, I wanted to take just a minute to, to maybe explain how these three budgets work together. I know that Angie spoke, uh, a few minutes ago and talked about the, the local fifty six funds and the local seven oh six funds. And I just wanted to take a few minutes to explain how all of that, um, intermingles together to make transportation work. We basically buy the majority of the things that we're gonna buy out of state oh fifty six funds. And then if those funds go towards something that is not a, a yellow school bus. It has to be charged back at the end of the month and, and my administrative team puts together a report, sends it to Angie and, and it shows how much. Everything from labor to parts to whatever else we might do, um, goes back against those budget accounts. So that's why you see in, in Allison's food service budget or in, in Joe's maintenance budget and the IT budget, you see tires and you see oil. You see those kinds of things in separate line items is because those are, are broken out. And at the end of the month, if we, if we spend that, it goes back against, against those. Uh, our shop rate's about twenty two dollars an hour, which is much less than what your shop rate would be if you took it to a mechanic outside. Um, so it doesn't matter which mechanic necessarily works on that vehicle. If it's a higher paid mechanic or a lower paid mechanic. Uh, the state just takes that, says the shop rate's twenty two hours. How many man hours did you work on these vehicles? And it sends that back to the appropriate agency or department to pay.
The state sets that twenty two dollars an hour.
Yeah, the state sets that at twenty two dollars an hour. Um, and so that comes out and, you know, it's, it's ha, that's handled at the back end of the, of the computer system, not something that we set. Um, and so, uh, when we look at what we get in state funds. Um, those state funds are determined based on a couple of factors. They look at how much money we spent the year before. They look at how many buses we had on the road that year and how many students were in those buses. And they take those three pieces and put it into a funding formula, um, that we get our first glimpse of and, and usually in January. So we, we see right now what our worst case potential is of what our, our possible funding rating would be for the next year. So we add those together, um, the state takes that, that amount of, of money that we've spent in state and in local fifty six. Everything that we've spent on yellow buses that was eligible, and there are some things that are not eligible. Um, while we can spend, for instance, um, state funds on software, for instance, some of the diagnostic software for our buses. We could, if we wanted to, spend that out of state funds. We usually buy that out of seven oh six. We could buy that out of state fifty six funds or local fifty six funds. The problem is we would not get reimbursed for that. So that would come out of our total amount before we get to the end of the month. So there's several, there's several things, shop expenses. If we buy a big piece of equipment for the shop. Totally okay for us to use state funds on that if it's gonna be used on a yellow bus, but at the end of the year, we lose that money. So it, it, in general, is not a good practice for us to spend that money on those things that are not eligible services. So we take all of those eligible services in state fifty six and in local fifty six and add them together. Um, and that brings us to, um, the next part, which is we multiply that by our state budget rating. And that is the amount the state provides us. Um, so if we look at where we're, where we projected, and I met with the finance committee, um, probably, uh, in, at the beginning of the last quarter, somewhere around October. And we talked about this, um, we were projecting somewhere around an eighty nine to a ninety budget rating. In January, we got our, our numbers back and our budget rating is, looks like the worst that we're gonna see this year would be a budget rating. I don't know if I put this on there or not, um, of about ninety point twenty two. And so that's the number that I, that I multiplied the actual budget we had for this year. Cause we're not anticipating spending any money unless we absolutely have to on, on non-eligible expenses. So we take that amount, multiply it by ninety point twenty two and we get the one point four nine six and change that the state would more than likely provide us next year, which allows us to anticipate what the local amount that we would need in order to offset that would be. That's where the amount of increase in, in the local fifty six budget of a hundred and sixty thousand came from. We didn't just draw that out of the air. But that came from this simulator that we ran to see where that budget would wind up, um, based on the anticipated projections. Okay, are there any questions about that up to that point? Cause I know I threw a lot at you in just a, a few minutes there.
So is the amount the state's gonna reimburse you possibly go down each year?
Well, the amount the state is gonna reimburse us is going to be dependent upon the number of buses that we put on the road. And the number of students that ride those buses and, and, and so we, we felt like we were, and I don't wanna say like, we had some, we were thick as far as the number of buses we had on the road. And the number of roads we were traveling. So there was some, some space there that we could gain without reaching a pain point. Um, because you realize if you cut too many buses off the road, you make those kids routes longer. Nobody wants to ride the bus. And then we find ourselves back here next year with an even lower budget rating because we, we didn't, we didn't eat it, 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 on the, on the forward side of that, so to speak. Um, so it was a, it was a give and take. We didn't wanna take six buses off the road and get to a hundred percent efficiency. Because we probably were gonna upset enough parents to where we were gonna lose even more kids and find ourselves having to take more buses off the road next year. So we wound up feel, feeling like two was a fair number that we could, we could take off without losing ridership. And so our hope is next year that we can stabilize our ridership. When we stabilize our ridership and we stabilize our number of buses on the road. Then our budget rating would stabilize as well. And that's kinda what we're looking for. I know we've had several years where we've lost enrollment. And if you look at our enrollment loss and you compare that to our bus ridership, those two numbers have fallen fairly consistently to each other. Um, and so as our, as our enrollment has dropped, our bus ridership has dropped and we're just, we're, we're. Um, it takes about a year before you really, you really pay for that and then the bus industry because of the way the budget formula works. And so we're paying for those things that we realized were happening a year and two years ago now in our budget rating. So that, that's kinda the, the easiest way for me to explain that back to you.
How do they determine the, uh, the bus ridership? Is it like an average per month? Is it a daily average? How do they?
In, in September typically of every year, the state selects a week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of a week. And everybody in the state counts that same week, the number of riders. And their idea there is, is that, that everybody deals with the same weather that same week for the most part. Now, if, they, they, they are good enough and smart enough to realize that if something major happens and typically at, at that time of, of year in September, we're not talking about winter storms. We're talking about hurricanes, um, they will back up and move those to, to, to accommodate that. But what they're looking for is a very consistent about the same time of year. Everybody's dealing with football. Everybody's dealing with all those things that are going on in, in the fall of the year when they count those students. So that, that everybody in the state's numbers are about the same, so that the budget ratings are consistent across the state. Somebody doesn't have a really high budget rating because they happen to count a better week than somebody else did.
Okay. So we need to have ride the bus month?
Well, and, and, and it really does become a, a marketing strategy that week with our principals in our schools. And, and we've talked to them about that.
On the bus.
Bus.
Donuts.
Then you get a little more time to get the buses.
Chop it down.
So you're looking about a hundred.
Chop it down.
Looking about a hundred and sixty two thousand. We got buses a hundred and sixty thousand, so we may be two thousand short.
But we, we are, and, and keep in mind, those are just projections and, and, and I feel like two thousand dollars is, is, is in, in a, in a budget that large is something that we can find if we have to somewhere else if, well, you know. The other thing is that, that we're gonna, we're gonna save, we don't, we don't save a lot of money by taking buses off the roads because you're still having to dri, pay drivers to drive those routes. You're still taking those other buses and putting on those, so you're not saving fuel, but you are having buses off the road. So that's one less bus that could possibly break. So there's some potential savings there, but those are, those are sunk cost savings. Those are not forward cost savings that you're gonna see that week on that bus route because those miles are still being driven. And those, those drivers are still having to be paid for that time. Because those miles are still being driven and those, those drivers are still having to be paid for that time.
Thanks.
Anybody have any other questions about the budget or any concerns?
Think y'all done a good job.
That's great, very informative, thank you very much.
Yes, that's going to be my last words. You thank you.
It was, it was pretty.
You said you had your last words.
I told you what I'll say, I'm, I'm doing a thank you now, so I think everybody appreciates that. Thank yous for what yous all do. We can all agree to disagree on some things, so. So, but thank yous for what yous do, I mean, I know it's a hard job, I mean, that's one of those things. Well, and I know that yous, yous do put in a lot of time. And like I, like I said, I know yous do what yous can, sometimes we all agree to disagree, but that's the reason why we're both here.
Again, thank everybody for being here and all the work you put into it, this has been very informative. And I think all the board members appreciate what you've done and it's enlightened us, you know, greatly.